Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our city council meeting. Today is Monday, November 15th, 2021. It's approximately 1:00 PM. Before we have our pledge of allegiance, I'm going to ask you to please rise for a brief moment of silence as we reflect back on the brave men and women of the United States Armed Forces as they protect our interests around the globe, as well as the great just men and women of Las Cruces Police Department and the Las Cruces Fire Department as they keep our city safe 24/7/365. Councilor Ben Como, if you'd join me in the pledge, please. Okay, just like we always start off our meetings, we're going to start off with the pet of the week, and Jennifer Martinez from our communications office will introduce those two pets.
And they are fantastic pets. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am Jennifer Martinez with the City's Communications Office, and today I have these two pets of the week to introduce you to, and I'll begin with our cat of the week. And his name is Allen. Allen is a five-year-old male, which is a little bit older than most cats at the shelter. He is a mellow kind of dude. He does have an FIV-positive diagnosis, and that means he has feline immunodeficiency virus. That could mean a greater chance of developing cancers or blood disorders than healthy cats. This guy, though, is just as deserving of a forever family. And then we have our dog of the week, Cardinal. This is a super-friendly sweetie, which is fun-sized. She has little legs, but she loves to go on walks with dogs and other human friends. She's about a year old, but already long overdue for a family to take her home. You can meet Cardinal or Allen by calling the Animal Services Center and making an appointment. That number is 3820018. You will need to provide their animal number, and for Cardinal, you can see it right there on the screen, 42273. And for Allen, it is 39702. There is also an event going on at the Animal Services Center this weekend. It's called the Pet Parade, and that takes place from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM at the shelter. That's, of course, 3551 Baton Memorial West, and that's in Las Cruces. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. And next, we're going to have our jobs of the week. And I see Dr. Francisco Payadas coming forward, so I'm sure you're going to go ahead and present those.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For today's jobs of the week, we have a warehouse worker for the City of Las Cruces. This position is going to be closing on December 11th of 2021. We are also having a communication service controller trainee. This is with Peraton Incorporated, and this position is going to be closing on January 23rd, 2022. There's also a position for a personal assistant. This is with Safe Harbor Incorporated, and this position closes on December 5th of 2021. There's also an aviation maintenance technician, and this is with Air Methods Incorporated, and this position is going to be closing on February 1st of 2022. We also have an eligibility and enrollment specialist. This is with the Amador Health Center, and this one closes on December 9th of 2021. For a full list of jobs, internships, and volunteer opportunities, please visit www.employnm.com and governmentjobs.com/careers/lascreuses. And the contact information, as every week, for our New Mexico Workforce Connections Office here locally is at 226 South Alameda Boulevard, and their phone number is 575-5246250. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Payadas. We appreciate it. Okay, so we have one proclamation, and I believe Councilor Ben Como is set to do that. There is no one here to receive, but for those small businesses know that this pertains to you. So, Councilor?
Oh, I haven't been on this side of this podium in a long time. Hey, everyone.
When you were a rebel rouser.
Still, you know what? Mayor, still am, still am. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to do this proclamation today, and it reads the following. Whereas the government of Las Cruces, New Mexico, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, and they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas small businesses employ 47.1% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas 97% of small business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them are also encouraged, friends and family, to do so. And whereas 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas Las Cruces, New Mexico, supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving a Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of Las Cruces, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021, a Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed, Mayor Ken Miyagashima and Christine Rivera, City Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, so I'll wait for Councilor Ben Como to come up, but I'll go ahead and read the conflict of interest statement. So I'll ask if any member of the city council, city manager, or any member of the city staff has any known conflict of interest on any item on the agenda.
None.
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 Seeing none?
None.
Okay, so now we're going to move to public participation. And this is where members of the public can speak to council for up to three minutes. In another time, a total of seven, so four minutes on your items on the agenda. And I usually start on my left and start with the first row. And so Bob, you're up. You've got three minutes. Just need you to state your name, please.
Three minutes, that's the whole.
Three minutes.
This is very important.
Yeah, I know. I need you to state your name, please.
Oh, my name is Robert Butler, of Las Cruces. This is very important. Dizzy, which, Mayor, I would like to sponsor Jack Warner with a key to the city. He is a veteran. He's probably too old to attend meetings like he did the past, and he was very helpful to you. I went to the veteran park this weekend, and I met the very, did you mean, did you mean, people, Butler. Very good. I saw him break that with my dad's name. That's why I'm here. Also, I want you to know that I am a federal prosecutor without a license. I'm very good at what I do. I have a lot of experience, and I'm old. I'm 69, and I'm winner. I'm not a loser. And I want to tell you that I love you very much. You're a very kind, thoughtful, good man. You're going to do very good being our United States Senator from Las Cruces. You're going to do very good. You're not government material. So Adam Marquez and his husband bought the Tesuries, and they're going to suffer, and they're Muslim. They're stupid. They were raised, he was taught, but bankrupted. Because I know I was raised by the Jewish town apostle. You are a good man. My wife-to-be is a good woman. She winner, like you, and she'll be honored to meet you and your wife. I thank you very much. I love everybody here, everybody. That's beginning to be my success. Oh, I also believe in no new taxes, Ken. Now, I know that's your forte, but I've talked to women, and women said, no new taxes. So that's very important to remember when I get out of the council. Thank you, and it's been a pleasure and honor.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, so that was first row, second row, third row. Ms. Jeffers? Yes, Vince. Let's see you beat that act. Let's see you talk, Bob.
My name is Vince Jeffers, and I just wanted to thank the city. I went to the Ren Fair. Young Park looked really good. The bathrooms are cleaned. Places where I normally sit that have a bunch of pigeon poop was washed down, power washed, and the place looked good. There's a lot of pride there. Thank you for that. I also noticed there was a tree that I normally sit under during the concerts in the park that has, I guess, been chopped down for a storm or whatever reason. I'm hoping that you're working on a plan to replace that tree and other trees that were lost in the storm. I know that the vixen tree, that's the one from Apodaca Park, I didn't even plant one in my yard. I was at Apodaca Park for a concert, and seeds were on my sneakers, but it took root in my front yard. And, you know, in less than 15 years, the base of it was probably, I don't know, a good 20 inches around. The next thing I was going to talk about is a 22-058. To me, if you're going to do a sole-source purchase, I know you solicited for people to come back to you and say, here's what we can do, but there are GSA contracts in place. You may not buy one of these every day or have it refurbished every day, but GSA deals with the cities, counties, states, and, of course, the federal government. So there are contracts in place for things like this, and I think it's easier when you use an existing contract for people that, that's all they do, day in, day out, is those types of contracts, instead of going to someone who said, yeah, we can do it. People, that's what we do. And keeping in mind, when you do it locally, the funds stay here. That's nice, but there's a lot of something for something around. Where people, they do things, and maybe things that shouldn't happen, happen. That's just an opinion. I, you know, I have nothing to say that I think someone's getting a kickback from it, but when you have something that was contracted for, it seems like it should be under warranty. You should be able to have it replaced, repaired, under a certain amount of time. And I'm sure the city's attorneys worked on something like that to get our interests protected, but it seems like when you stay with the same local vendors or contractors, the city's losing out. The citizens are losing out. So I'm just asking you to expand what you're doing a little bit wider and hopefully help the citizens save some of their tax dollars. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jeffers. Okay, that was third row. Anyone on the fourth row? Anyone on the fifth row? Yes, please. Just need you to state your name, please.
Jonathan Zep. Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, city manager. I just wanted to come and take a moment to extend my thanks to so many people at the city hall and city government who have made this film and television production industry in Las Cruces thrive over the last couple of months and continue to thrive as we move forward. This includes city manager Efo, Assistant City Manager Ikani, Annette Granado, Elizabeth Teeters, Doña Soto, Cruz Ramos, Chief Haver, Chief Smith, Mark Dubin, Sergeant Max, Sergeant Alva, Lieutenant Molen, Hector Terrazas, Chris Favor, and so many others. This is truly a team effort, and I can't thank everyone enough for making all of this possible. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Other than that, that is what I wanted to say.
All right, well, thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, it's been pretty fun, pretty exciting to see Hollywood coming here to Las Cruces.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, John, for all the wonderful work you've done. And I know a few years ago, it was tough sometimes, and I think you've done a marvelous job, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Flavis.
Thanks, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so that was the fifth row. Anyone else? Sixth row? Seventh? Yes, please. Oh, well, after this gentleman here in the yellow. Okay?
Good afternoon. My name is Uriel Rosales Ayana, and I am a community organizer with the New Mexico Dream Team. I am a Korean resident of Las Cruces as well, and I am here with other community members to speak in favor of Resolution 22059. My family and I immigrated from Mexico about 12 years ago and arrived in southern New Mexico. I have lived in several parts of Doñana County, starting in Anthony, later in Chaparral, and now in Las Cruces. I have a good perspective of the community in border towns, and I definitely know that the undocumented population is very significant. This is not something that harms our communities, but on the other helm, on the other hand, it helps us and allows us to thrive. New Mexico undocumented immigrants help drive the local economy by being vital members of New Mexico labor force in the following industries: agriculture, hospitality, commercial drives, food services, construction, building, and grounds maintenance. 8,935 undocumented business owners accounted, account for 17% of self-employed New Mexico residents and generate $319.5 billion in business income. New Mexico undocumented immigrants have $3.2 billion in spending power, adding billions of dollars to the New Mexico economy, and pay more than $67.7 million in state and local taxes. We are in a critical time as our officials in DC debate this issue. My family, my life, our, and families of millions are in limbo. We must have a strong stance of whereon this. Today, I am here to ask the city council for its support for immigration policies based on human need and human interest, restructuring our immigration system to put human dignity first. To conclude, I ask the City of Las Cruces to make a commitment of welcoming the undocumented community and to uphold and protect the rights of, by approving this resolution. Thank you, City Council Ben Como and Councilor Vasquez for their help in making this resolution possible and the rest of the council for considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let you know, this will have its own, it's item 7.1. So for those who came here to want to discuss, they're welcome to do so at that time. I mean, unless you have to leave. But typically, the council won't respond on this public participation portion, even when there's an item on the agenda. So just thought I'd let you know.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay, no problem. We're good.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, Councilor.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you so much for your request. The City of Las Cruces is a welcoming city, and we passed a resolution about three or four years ago. And this one pretty much updates what we've already done in the past. So thank you, Councilors Ben Como and Vasquez. And yes, we are a welcoming city, and dream on. Thank you.
Okay, so that was the sixth row. I believe this gentleman here right in front, you wanted to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
My name's Jesse Kinzer. I'm a movie producer. I've brought in four films in the past since February, and I just wanted to thank the city for several things: the police department, the fire department, and dealing with our last-minute requests. Sometimes I know it's kind of a pain in the butt, but sometimes it happens like that, especially when you're making two movies in 14 days. But I just wanted to give my gratitude to you guys and thank you so much for working with us. And we look forward to continue to bring more films into the city, as many as we possibly can. So just wanted to say thank you once again and look forward to continue working with you guys and potentially coming up with some better ways to do some things in the future to keep it economically flowing and all that kind of stuff. So absolutely, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Jesse.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was sixth row, seventh row, eighth row. Anyone? Last row? So anyone else on my left? Okay, so I'll turn to the right. No one on the first row? Anyone second row? Third row? Fourth? Fifth? Sixth? Anyone else on my right? I guess it's all staff there. Okay. Okay, that ends public participation. So with that, entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Mayor, can I pull 6.2, please?
Okay, 6.2.
So I'll make a move to accept the agenda with that change.
I second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Sorek, second by Councilor Vasquez, to accept the agenda with item 6.2 removed for discussion. Christine?
This is on the motion to accept the agenda as presented with removal of item 6.2 for discussion. Councilor Beta Stupi?
Yes.
Councilor Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilor Ben Como?
Yes.
Councilor Sorek?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so we're going to get this item 6.2, Resolution 22-058.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Sorek, second by Mayor Protem Gandera. Alex Liu will be presenting. Mayor Protem, did you have a specific question or did you want a full presentation?
I have a full, would you have a full presentation, please? Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council. My name is Chen Alex Liu with Purchasing Section. Today, going to present you the procurement for construction of unitar playground rehabilitation and splash pad addition. This is a Go-Bomb project for the City of Las Cruces. Some background of this procurement: this is a 2018 Go-Bomb project that was adopted into the program, the renovation of the unitar playground and addition of a new splash pad within the park boundaries. It is a request for proposal. It was posted in June 20, June 25th, 2021, and due back to the city July 27th, 2021. It was on the market for over a month and was posted on local newspaper, New Mexico BitNet, and our city website. The project is also budgeted in our fiscal year 2022 budget. 136 vendors solicited, one proposal received. The selection advisory committee reviewed the proposal. They recommend Highland Enterprise, Inc. of Las Cruces, New Mexico, to be awarded for contract. This is a local contractor, and we'll use local subcontractors for the construction. Total award amount is now to exceed $925,732.20 plus tax. The estimation completion date is 175 calendar days after notice to proceed is issued. Thank you, and here are your council options. Who stands for questions?
Thanks, Alex. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alex, for the presentation. Alex, I do have a few questions. Can you give a little history on the initial build of the playground? I know it wasn't a city-initiated project.
Thank you for the question, Mayor Protem. I'll defer the question to Public Work Director.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilor Gandera. You're right, the, like we call, the wooden park was built by volunteers quite some time ago. I think Parks and Rec has a little more background, but there was a lot of community involvement in that. So as part of our groundbreaking for the project, we're going to see, work with community development or community outreach and see how we can get some of the same volunteers who helped build it, and how we can have some kind of ceremony to remove some of that wood and kind of get them involved with the new construction of the project. So right now, staff is currently working together to see what kind of, I guess you could say kickoff meeting, groundbreaking, wood-pulling ceremony that we can have for that project.
Tony, thank you so much for that. One person that you might want to reach out to is Gil Padilla from the Department of Health. I know he has been one of the main people who's still currently at the Department of Health, working. He was one of the initial folks that helped bring community together. And so another question is, what does the upkeep look like for that wooden park, fondly known as Splinter Park? I want everybody to know that, too. What's the upkeep and the cost of that yearly?
So Mayor, Councilor Gandera, I can ask maybe Kathy Matthews to help with the O&M for that project, but moving forward, we're not going to have no wood anymore. We got with a design, a playground architect specialist that kind of designed the park made out of synthetic poly that will kind of maintain it, and we won't get these splinters kind of joining you when you write down the slide or something. So the O&M on this is totally going down. And so that's up to see.
Thanks, Tony. I know it's a beloved park, and especially because the community was so involved in the initial, in the building, building. building out of that park. And I know we got a lot of, I mean, I continue to get a lot of feedback about that park, and why are you doing, and similar to Mr. Jeffers, those questions about why you're completely removing that. And so I'd be happy to hear more feedback about that.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Matthews, landscape architect with Parks and Recreation. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gandara, I don't have the exact numbers of what it takes to maintain Unidad, but I can say it is very difficult. In our climate, of course, wood just does not last. It just simply doesn't last. And to maintain a quality level of service in a park that is usable in the long term, the decision was made to replace using the character and the style of the existing Unidad to influence the selection of the new park or playground equipment. It is absolutely our intention through this process of construction to maintain some of the elements, the actual elements, so that some of the iconic features of the existing playground will remain and will be improved and enhanced and utilized throughout the project area. So, we're absolutely recognizing the community's input and how beloved that this park is to people. And, you know, that said, we have to keep an eye out for people's safety and make sure that they have a quality facility to play on.
Thank you so much, Kathy, for that history. And the initial, what is it, company and/or contractor that you bought this equipment is even no longer in existence, is my understanding?
Counselor Gandara, indeed, Leathers, I think they're Leathers and Company or Leathers Incorporated. We did speak with them a number of years ago, but have not had much communication with them since then, so it's likely that they are not in business anymore.
Okay. Kathy, will you be thinking about historically either by picture or maybe some nice monument, or I don't, art installation of sorts related to what it looked like in the past, just sort of honoring, right, that time and the community's involvement in that? Have you thought about what that might look like?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Gandara, we, the steps we've taken so far have been basically to preserve the towers and to preserve the tiles that were representative of the people who participated in the original construction, and also the fence railings as well. So those elements will remain somewhat as an art piece, not as play equipment, but as an art piece and a recognition of that kind of participation early on. We absolutely can consider, maybe there's some way of, I don't know, developing some kind of signage or something that has a presence in the park or at the entry to the park that could be reflective of some photographic evidence of what's there currently, and anything we can find in the archives with regard to the initial process of building and that community effort to make this park happen. I think we can definitely look into something like that.
I think, I'm glad that you can. That would be my recommendation. And my only ask is that we try to keep the history of that park in the sense of documenting some way, maybe a wayfinding sign of sorts, right, at the entry, the exit, related to this project as a community project. And I would appreciate it. So thank you so much for
Thank you.
you entertaining the idea and for the presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, if I may?
Excuse me, I have a question for Ms. Matthews.
Yes, Ms. Kathy Matthews, you, Councillor?
You've been subpoenaed. You are hereby required to appear.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Matthews. Yes, I think that I agree with Mayor Protem Gandara on this, and it's definitely part of the public art. And I believe it would go to Quality of Life, and then Ms. Gallagher, Dr. Gallagher, can then determine whether it's a city art board project. I know we're very low on funds there, sadly. But, and then Nan Rubin, who's one of the founders of radio K-Tel. Get that? K-Tel. Sounds so funny in English, K-Tel. She would like to help the city art board, or work with the city art board, to place, there's a certain word for it, but my little brain doesn't retain a lot of information these days, to, but, a marker of sorts that gives an explanation and a history of that particular area. This was done in connection with putting these sorts of things up at bus stops or places around the city. I know that the city art board is still, I don't know if Sessi's here or if Dr. Gallagher's here, or somebody from Quality of Life. But at any rate, maybe you can communicate with them about that, Kathy, or Ms. Matthews, so that, because I think that's an excellent idea, because we have a lot of places in the city that deserve that kind of recognition, and will keep our history alive and all that sort of stuff. So thank you very much, Ms. Matthews, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. And sorry for interrupting, Tony.
Thank you.
Or sorry for subpoenaing your back. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, I was going to say, I was trying to remember when that park started. I remember my daughter was like about five, and she said, all these people are going to help build it. So she's twenty-eight, so that's about twenty-three years ago. And maybe this gentleman you were talking about helped lead that. I don't recall. I knows, and I can't remember where the wood got donated. I don't know if we all pitched in and put money, and they just bought a bunch of wood, or someone donated all the wood. But a lot of people just, they had this plan, and they just built it, and I guess they turned it over to the city to maintain it after it was built. That's all I remember, so.
Yeah, Mayor, I was with the Department of Health when that happened and went over and helped build that park. So, I know Gil Padilla was instrumental in sort of the lead organizer in that. So he's still there at the Department of Health, and I'm happy to connect to you guys if you need. I think Kathy's saying yes. She knows, I believe. Thank you, Mayor.
And I think the attraction to it was that hundreds of people helped build it. And so that's why it has its, you know, it's just really different. And like I said, I don't think the city said to get the wood. I think it was just donated. I can't remember how it was raised, but, yeah. Okay, good. Any other comments from council? How about members of the public? Okay, seeing none, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero five eight. Counselor Beta Stewie?
Yes.
Counselor Vázquez?
Yes.
Counselor Ben Como?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flores?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now we go to item seven point one, resolution twenty-two dash zero five nine.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Vázquez, second by Counselor Sorg. And Sergio Ries will discuss.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Sergio Ries, policy analyst for the record. This is a resolution for a pathway to citizenship for undocumented immigrants. The City of Las Cruces is a city that welcomes immigrants. The City of Las Cruces is a diverse, welcoming community and a friendly city to all immigrants. The Las Cruces City Council supports a pathway to citizenship for the sixty thousand undocumented New Mexicans, because immigrants contribute. New Mexico undocumented immigrants help drive the local economy. Immigrants pay more than sixty-seven point seven million dollars in state and local taxes. There needs to be a call for reform. The City Council calls on Congress to develop comprehensive immigration reform, and the City Council affirms its support for immigration policies. That concludes my presentation, and I will leave that for, to City Council for discussion and vote.
Thank you, Sergio. Who wants to start off? Counselor Ben Como, Counselor Vázquez?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much, Sergio, for working with the advocates and with us on turning this resolution around fairly quickly and with good timeline. You know, as we know, Congress drives your feet on everything, so we're perfectly good. But this felt really important to me to just reiterate and vocalize that Las Cruces has been a welcoming community to immigrants and people of all backgrounds for a really long time, but especially in the last few years. And, you know, we right now are in once-in-a-generation moment where Congress is currently discussing applying another pathway to citizenship for undocumented people in this country. The last time we saw an actual pathway was in the late eighties. That's when my dad got his green card. And we haven't seen anything since then, and frankly, it's shameful, and it's about time we do it. And whatever comes out of this negotiation in Congress right now will not be enough. Enough will be when eleven million people are on a pathway to citizenship, and everyone gets papers, papeles para todos. And, but today, right now, is a great moment to get a bunch of people who in the last two years were essential workers. You cannot be both essential and deportable at the same time. And it is time Congress makes a decision about our communities, protects thousands, millions of people who kept us fed during the pandemic, who kept our hospitals clean, who kept our streets built, who did so much for us. And not just because of that. Immigrants have value beyond what they provide to the economy. There are families, there are people that we live next to, that we pray next to, that we go to school with. And so I'm very proud that we're doing this today. I'm always very proud to talk about this as someone who is formerly undocumented, and this is something that's very close to my heart. So I really appreciate Sergio and, of course, the Dream Team for bringing this to us. And, you know, I will work with you all on anything moving forward. So thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Vázquez?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sergio, as well, for putting together this resolution. And of course, thank you to our visitors and advocates here from across the state who are fighting for our communities and for immigrant communities at all kinds of different levels, local level, state level, and federal level. You know, growing up and seeing my mother, an immigrant to this country, and how hard she worked to get everything that she had, her education, a job, a house for us to live in, give me eventually the opportunity to go to school, to think that I could run for City Council and also do the work that I do in environmental and conservation work. All happened because she dreamed big, and she dreamed and thought that this country could provide her with the opportunity to give us a better life. And there's, as Counselor Ben Como mentioned, eleven million other undocumented people who have that same dream, who are here in this country for the same reason. And for far too long, we've ignored those people in our communities and the rights that they deserve to have, especially during the pandemic. You know, it hasn't, it's not just our farm workers and our folks who are working in hotels and hospitality industry, but it's our young students who are studying at the Burrell College of Osteopathic Medicine to become doctors who are living in mixed-status families. They are folks who are studying to be attorneys and who are lawyers already in our community, and folks who are going to add tremendous value by starting small businesses and also becoming teachers and professors. And so immigrants are built into the fabric of our community and who we are. And Congress can do it this time around with the Build Back Better bill that's being proposed. We do have a unique opportunity. And so from our spot as border city here in Las Cruces, New Mexico, I think it's our duty to make sure that we show the powers that be, our congressional delegation, that we strongly support the inclusion of this policy in this Build Back Better Act. And so with that, I just want to say thank you again to the advocates. Thank you to Sergio, and thank you to my fellow city councillors, because you make me so incredibly proud to serve with you, knowing that you support these types of resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sorg, Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sergio, for those remarks and information. This is very important, and it's important for the rest of the council here. And I appreciate Counselor Ben Como and Counselor Vázquez doing this. It's very personal. I'm a little surprised we haven't done this a long time ago. I think the welcoming resolution that we had here, what, three or so years ago? You know, that was part of the whole process. But getting this path to citizenship is so important for so, so, so long. Yeah, we should have done this a long time ago, perhaps. But I like to point out that not only the sixty thousand undocumented immigrants in New Mexico, but all undocumented immigrants in the whole country this applies to. And a special shout-out to the DACA, DACA people, for this, too. So, yeah, this is about time, about time we did it. And just remember, we're all immigrants in this country, except for the few that have lived here for, originally, original people. So, yes, fully support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Flores?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Mr. Ries, for your presentation. And again, thank you, Councillors Ben Como and Vázquez. I think I agree that it's time to call for an Immigration Reform Act. In nineteen eighty-six, there was ERCA. It was the Immigration Reform Something Act. And it can be done. It was done. Where there was, and it was basically led by Labor, AFALCIO. But what became ERCA was that people could become, apply for permanent, what is it called? Permanent residency, the green card. Could apply for, no questions asked. And I did some of that work in conjunction with the AFALCIO. And it was very successful. There was a window, but the beauty of it was that there were no questions asked whatsoever. People would show up, and people were granted citizenship, excuse me, the road to citizenship, because there's permanent residency. The other thing we have to call for, in addition to a reform, and immigration laws, we all know, changes more often than some people change their channels on their TVs or whatever they're watching. You know, I mean, it's just amazing how often, you know, this, the national, there's the Immigration Naturalization Act of this year, of that year, and they change just, you know, just however, whenever. But I think we have to call for that. And the other thing we have to call for is that the process is so expensive. I mean, it used to be, I don't know, a hundred dollars or less or nothing to, quote, file papers. That's why they're called papeles or documentos. But now it's become, you know, I remember working on, I think it was Representative, yeah, it was Representative Rubio's first campaign, and there was a man there who said, well, I can't vote. You know, knocked on the door, he said, I can't vote. And he says, I'm here legally, though, he said, but, he said, I can't afford to become a US citizen, so I can't vote. So those are the things that we have to alert Congress to. And we have to make sure that our local senators and our state representatives, excuse me, our US representative hears this and move on it. So I just want to say that publicly, and I hope that it falls on the right ears and that we're able to move forward, because that's what has to be done. It isn't, it's wonderful that we're doing a resolution, and I hope it falls on ears that are listening. And thank you again, Sergio, and thank you, fellow councillors, for doing this. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. So, thank you, Sergio. I'm not too sure if some of the members in the audience are aware of some of my ancestry. So on my father's side, my grandparents immigrated here from Japan. And on my mother's side, immigrated from Mexico. So, you know, gosh, we're, like Counselor Sorg said, we all are immigrants. And so anyways, although interestingly, my brother did that twenty-three, what is it? That DNA thing? It turns out, it's hard to believe, well, it actually puts a lot of, ties up a lot of things. One time, I was up in Farmington, and I saw this Native American. He sure looked a lot like my father, and it turns out that I'm almost twenty-eight. And it turns out that I'm almost 28% American Indian. Wow, that's pretty cool. So anyways, so needless to say, it's a good resolution. For those that came here who wish to speak, you're welcome to come forward now if you'd like. You still have a little bit of time. So I'll start with this row and just kind of work my way back. For those of you who do want to speak, if you want to make your way up here to the front, that would be great. That way there, you can just, after each one finishes speaking, you're welcome to just... Okay, Mr. Jeffers, I think you probably have a couple minutes left, two or three minutes. I'm sure you know exactly how much time you have.
Four minutes are good. My name is Vince Jeffers, and I support this, and it's a good thing. But I just, I really don't understand what this means, pathway to citizenship. And you guys are right on the front lines, you're the foot soldiers. You see so much happening here, and you're not doing enough with it, sending things forward up to the federal government, saying, "We need this from you." And really doing, this is an opportunity, it's a great step here. But one thing you said is, "I can't vote." Put all those things down that you see firsthand and throw it up to the federal government. Let them do their job. When I first moved here, one of the comments the city council member had made, and this is years and years ago, "We can't do anything about immigration. That's a federal issue. We have nothing to do with it." But in the meantime, all kinds of whispers behind here, working in the shadows, bringing people across the border illegally, helping people to do that. I think there's a right way to do it. I don't think that, you know, having people cut in front of lines to get there is the right way to do it. But I do acknowledge they're here, and should they be given extra privileges for the, instead of the people who are, I'm not going to say more deserving, but maybe needed more. And they're in a different country, and they are having a difficult time. And the other thing is, when they're not legally here, I feel a lot of those people are used and abused. They're leveraged, leveraged to sometimes do things that they don't want to do. And I think if you bring that out, and you show this happened to these people, this person, and you really have accountability to the people who were leveraging and having people in the hotel room, you know, doing things that they didn't want to do, or, you know, I think you have a better way of doing it, is all I'm trying to say. And it's a great first step. I'm proud of you for at least saying, "Hey, we'd like to see a pathway to citizenship." But give me some very specific, one, two, three, four, five. I'm not saying that the resolution didn't acknowledge all the contributions. That's great, thanks. But I'm saying, what are the steps? And you guys, within the people here, you can do that. You can put together a decent policy and send it forward, up to the federal government. Thanks.
Thank you. Do you think there was someone else wanting to speak? Yes, please come forward, just need you to state your name.
Thank you, Council. My name is Eileen Martinez, and I myself am a DACA recipient and come from a family of immigrants. So I just want to show my support for this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, say none, Christine.
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 22-059. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, next item, 7.2, Resolution 22-060.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Vazquez, second by Mayor Potem Gondara. Mr. William Blanchard will discuss.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. William Blanchard, Budget Analyst. And the resolution before you is to accept the various budget adjustments for November fiscal year 2022. These budget adjustments contain no new programs or policy initiatives. They are focused on compliance and alignment. We have some requests for new vehicles through the vehicle acquisition funding. And with me today, I have the Public Works Director, Mr. David Sadio, who will discuss changes to the CIP. We have representatives available to answer any questions, and as always, we strive to apply best practice. The amounts we are requesting today are in the column with the yellow heading, and we are letting you know what kind of adjustment we are making. R is for revenue, E for expense, and T for transfer. Economic Development is decreasing expenses, $150,000 in the Economic Development Fund for the termination of the 420 South Valley LIDA project. Police is increasing revenue and expense, $12,648 in the Special Revenue Grants Fund for the DOJ burn grant needed to reimburse Don Yana Sheriff's Office for equipment purchases. Economic Development is decreasing revenue and expense, $400,000 in the Special Revenue Grants Fund for the termination of the 420 South Valley LIDA project. Parks and Recreation is increasing revenue, $14,115 in the Capital Projects Grant Fund to adjust their smart controller grant to actual. Parks and Rec is increasing expenses, $410,556 in the Public Park Development Fund to address projects to actuals. These projects include the Apodaca Park Aquatic Playground and Multi-Use Path, East Mesa Public Safety Area, Highland Park, and Pueblos at Alameda. Las Cruces Airport is decreasing revenue, $290,566, and expenses, $504,251 in the Airport Fund to adjust their projects to actuals. Transit is decreasing revenue, $56,220, and expenses, $70,279 in the Transit Operating Fund to adjust their grants to actuals. Legal is increasing expenses, $334,604 in the Liability Claims Fund to increase legal fees for the grocery receipts tax settlement. We have some additions to the city's fleet that needs approval. All of these vehicles are already budgeted but need approval to add to the city fleet. Public Works is requesting a semi-transport truck, low-boy flatbed trailer, and a tow-behind asphalt trailer. And now I will turn it over to Mr. David Sadio to discuss the CIP.
Thank you, Will. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, David Sadio, Public Works Director. And I'll be going over the CIP amendments with you. As you can see, all the projects here on this slide are for the Las Cruces Airport. We do have the passenger terminal, Runway 1230 Extension, and the maintenance facility, design, and construction, which are further down in the slide, are all being revised for future year cost estimates. We do have the airport infrastructure improvements. That is a budget adjustment, as Mr. Blanchard said. Those budgets are being revised to actuals. Also, the drainage master plan that is being removed from the CIP as that project has been completed. Lastly, on this slide, we do have Runway 826 Extension. That is having both a budget and a CIP adjustment. It's being revised for both budget to actuals and also for future year cost estimates. On this slide, we also have a couple more Las Cruces Airport projects. We have the Index B Equipment Upgrades. That as well is being revised for future cost estimates and is a CIP amendment. And then we have the Runway 1230 Pappys, the design and construction. This is being removed as it will be incorporated with the Runway 1230 Extension Project. The next four projects Mr. Blanchard mentioned before in the budget adjustments are all being revised to meet actuals. Those include the projects of Apodaca Park Aquatics Playground and Multi-Use Path, the East Mesa Public Safety Area Park, the Highland Park, and also Pueblos at Alameda. At this time, Mr. Blanchard and I will stand for questions. We also have staff from departments to answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Counselor Sorg, Counselor Beta Stuvi, Counselor Flotis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you.
Counselor, can you talk into the mic, please?
It's right here.
Yeah, well, we can't hear you.
Okay, we'll fix that. You provided information about the Apodaca Park, Aquatic Park Playground. You say it's a budget adjustment? So the adjustment is what? Is that going up or down, or what? Is there a different adjustment?
Mayor, Counselor Sorg, I will defer that to Kathy Matthews with Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy Matthews, Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sorg, previously, in previous budget adjustment requests, we had adjusted some budget from the Apodaca Park, from these four projects, to other projects that required additional funding. So since they had been budgeted, we essentially borrowed the funding from those projects, and now we're returning those budgets to what they should be. So previous budget adjustments had shifted funding from those projects to other projects. Now we're restoring those budgets to what they should be.
Okay, understand. That includes the East Mesa Public Safety Area Park?
Correct.
And the Highland Park?
Correct.
And the Pueblos at Alameda, too?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Beta Stuvi, and then Counselor Flotis.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Blanchard and Mr. Sadio. The question I have is from Slide 4. It is specific, so I think it's going to be legal that answers it. But it is regarding the GRT settlement and the requested adjustment, and if there are any other considerations for the future.
Mayor, Counselor Beta Stuvi, Ms. Leanne DeMouche, our Finance Director, will be able to answer that question for you. Or Rob Caveo from Legal.
Thank you.
Mayor, Counselor Stuvi, we're tag teaming here. As you know, back, I want to say in May, we had a closed meeting about the settlement that we were working on with Taxation and Rev. That has come through. Excuse me, we received our payment from Taxation and Rev in our last distribution check for our GRT. At the time in May, I think we had asked for that settlement to be about 2.8 million, around there. And it actually went up. It's around, actually, it's a total of $3,085,678.18. So there was about 44 cities and municipalities that were in on this, with us, in this litigation. And so what you see on this budget adjustment is that from that, the litigators that helped us with this, we now have to pay them a portion, I want to say it's 10%. And so that is what this budget adjustment for is, for the 10%. We put it in legal because most, well, not most, all of our legal fees are paid out of $63.40, which is our litigation fund.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Good news, Leanne. Counselor Flotis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for David, or maybe Leanne. So when you show that, for example, the airport, you know, adjusting projects to actuals, is there any, is there any, does any of this reflect the funding that the airport gets from the FAA or anything like that? I'm just curious as to, you know, their budget, adjusted budgets, but it isn't broken down insofar as the source? No?
Mayor, Counselor Flotis, at this time, I will ask either Andy Hume, the airport manager, as he has details of those accounts and what those adjustments and where those funds come from.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, Counselor Flotis, in this particular graph, that graphic that we have here, it's an aggregate of a lot of different funding sources. So for instance, the reason why it's as high as it is, and a couple of million, is because it includes the Apron project that we did complete. So we had some funding left over that we need to unfortunately send back to FAA. But this also includes some projects from, that were funded by New Mexico DOT that we've completed as well. And so all of, basically what we did back in, much earlier in the calendar year, is estimate on how much we would have as this fiscal year started. As we finish projects or spend down projects, then we need to, as it says, adjust to actuals because we've completed projects or we've received new funding that we were not anticipating. And so that's what this does, is it, is it makes that adjustment.
Thank you so much, Andy. So insofar as the funding, some of it had to be sent back to the FAA because the money wasn't used in a timely manner, or it wasn't used because it was over the amount that was needed to complete a project? But then you have to have actuals to make adjustments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Counselor Flotis, actually, the second scenario is correct. We, as far as the scope of the project, we completed the entire scope of the project. We had funding left over. We did request FAA if we could expand the scope of the project. They said no, and so we had to return the project. So the project was definitely completed within the timeframe allotted. But unfortunately, they wouldn't let us go further on that. So we have to return that funding to them. But this reflects the fact that we are returning those funds.
I see. So but then, that doesn't preclude you from applying for further funds for a similar project or another runway, or?
Absolutely correct, yes. This is, this is not, in fact, the FAA likes the fact that we stay within the scope of the project. So this is, this is a good thing for us. It's, you never like turning back money, of course, but, you know, we did the project as it was, as it was scoped, and it was very successful. And then, yeah, we need to move on from that on to other projects.
Great. That was the information I wanted to share with everybody. So thank you, Andy.
Sure.
Thank you for all your work, and thank you for making sure we get money from the FAA.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, David and Mr. Blanchard, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Bencomo?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm not sure who this question is, probably definitely not for David. But I'm just curious, Will, maybe you know if we've heard anything from the state regarding LIDA funds available to the cannabis industry?
Mayor, Counselor Bencomo? I do not know the answer to that question. And is there, if there's someone from Economic Development?
I can, well, my answer would be, we haven't heard. But if Elizabeth has anything else, we haven't heard, I haven't heard anything from the state.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Elizabeth Teeters. And yeah, it's been a question we've been asking them a lot because we are getting a lot of interest. We do know there's cannabis businesses moving here. But there has not been a decision made at the state level, so.
Okay, thank you, both.
Anybody else? How about members of the public? Say none, Christine.
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 22-060. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Gondara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 7.3, Resolution 22-061.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Sorg, second by Counselor Beta Stuvi, and Cheryl Dela Cruz will be presenting.
Good morning, thank you. So greetings, Mayor and City Councilmember, Cheryl Dela Cruz, Budget Analyst. The resolution before you is to accept three federal grants and six capital outlet grants. Mesia Valley Metropolitan Planning Organization has received their annual operating funding from the Federal Highway Administration via the New Mexico Department of Transportation for $258,430. There is a match- There is a match amount required of $44,040, and this will come from the general fund. Public Works has received funding through the 2021 Legislative Capital Outlay Plan for several different projects, which include $100,000 for Branigan Cultural Center improvements, $1,820,610 for Casa de Peregrino's Food Rescue Warehouse, $400,000 for East Madrid Avenue Extension, and $414,000 for East Mesa Roads and Drainage. We are also bringing in funds for two other public work projects, both funded by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Picacho Hawk Pedestrian System is the first of two for $190,000. These funds do require a match of $63,333, which has already been budgeted for in the GRT Street Maintenance Fund. The TAP Transportation Alternatives Program, Walna in Madrid Construction Project, has been awarded $1,093,660, with an already budgeted required match of $186,373,000, bringing that total project to $1,280,033. Police has received a de-escalation training program grant from the US DOG Office of Community Oriented Policy Services for $188,500. These funds will be used to train academy trainers in evidence-based training techniques, purchase up-to-date training supplies and enhancements, and pay for officers overtime during training. The Economic Development Department has received state funding from the local Economics Development Department for Sapo Do Cheese USA, Inc., to expand their production facility and create 150 new jobs by December 31, 2026. There is a match amount of $300,000, which is coming out of the Economic Development Fund. Combine, this brings this total project amount to $2,800,000. And with that, that shall do it for the month. Here are your council options. I do have Madeline Shae from Grants, along with representatives from each of the departments available to help answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Members of the public? Seeing none?
Awesome, thank you.
Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 22-061. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vazquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sorg?
Yes.
Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Gandara?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So next item is 7.4, Resolution 22-062.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Gandara, second by Counselor Vazquez, and looks like Leanne Demouch will be presenting.
Get all my notes here. Good afternoon, Mayor and Counselor. For the record, Leanne Demouch, Finance Director. Before you today is the 2022 Legislative Session Capital Outlay Priorities. As you know, in the past, Ms. Basford and, I think, Mr. Sadio and Ife and Larry Haran met with each of the counselors individually on the legislative session and the capital outlay priorities, and we had a work session, I want to say back in October 25th, that we actually presented all of the legislative priorities, and we accumulated your top 10. And that is what I will be presenting to you, is the top 10. As always, the project selection, these projects must be on the approved State ICIP. There's project readiness, the amount of funding required to complete the project, the potential to phase a project. As you know, sometimes legislators call, or Larry calls us and says, a legislator wants to give funding towards this particular project, are you able to phase it in? And so we looked at the phasing as well for the projects. Of course, this year, we looked at the alignment with Elevate and our new city strategic plan, and it must be a capital improvement that has a life of 10 years. So the first project of the 10, these are in no order of priority, by the way, just wanted to put that there. The sewer and utility projects, the septic tank replacement projects, we're requesting through the, to the state, about 4.6 million in total. This is based on priority areas, that was a study done in 2008. This is in the Brittany Estates, and also the Hacienda Acres Phase 3. For street and flood control projects, there were two in the top 10, East Mesa Roads and Drainage, which was about 7 million. These projects include land acquisition, design, right-of-way, and construction. This is based on a drainage study that was recently completed. The other one is the Tellshore-Spruce Intersection Improvement, which is about 1.5 million. Project includes land acquisition, design, right-of-way, construction, to include a signal improvements, utilities, and flood infrastructure. Under Public Safety, we had, this is four altogether. For Police, there was a request of equipment for $180,000, and for building improvements for $750,000. Excuse me, under Fire, there was a equipment request of $750,000, and for station improvements, it was $840,000. Under Parks and Recreation, the request for Skate Park was about 2 million. This is planned, designed, purchased, installed, construct, and equip the skate parks. For Veterans Park, 2 million to acquire rightaways and to plan, construct, install, and equip parking areas, including related infrastructure, utilities, and flood control. And then the next one is for the Juvenile Citation Building Improvements of $230,000. That was to plan, design, construct, renovate, furnish, equip improvements, including energy efficiency measures. This is an overall project list summary. For Septic Systems, 4.6, flood and control, 8.5. Public Safety for Police, 930,000. Public Safety for Fire, 1.59 million. Parks and Recreation, 4.23 million. And we have a total request for about 19.85 million. These are your council options, and as always, we have staff to answer any questions. I wish I had Ms. Basford's mind in my head to remember everything like she does, but I will do my best.
Okay, thanks, Leanne. Questions, Counselor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Leanne. My question is just around the coordination of requests with the county, with Doñana County. Are they aware of the list that we are approving today, and have meetings been held to see perhaps what their priorities will be, and help coordinate as well, maybe the town of Mesia? I'm wondering if those meetings have happened yet.
Mayor, Counselor Vazquez, I am not aware of any. I know in the past, the only time that we coordinated was when we were going after funding for the rest of the Parks and Rec Trailway. We requested, we met with them and got their buy-in and their support for that, but as far as individually meeting with them every year, it is my understanding that we do not, sir.
Thank you so much. I know we've talked about this before in terms of that coordination, because the county is, you know, we're in a competitive process with the county in going after funds, because we share legislators, of course, that overlap with both county and city districts, and with Mesia, whenever there's connectivity, but also overlapping districts. It's good to just keep it, keep us all on the loop, and I know that there's been some frustration expressed in the past when we haven't had those conversations, because when we do have an opportunity to create a list that has perhaps one, or two, or three shared projects amongst different jurisdictions, it's more likely that we'll get it if we're all three making the ask to the same legislator. So not a problem, just a question, but I know that in the past, we have heard those comments from our friends at the county and our friends in Mesia, and so maybe there's still an opportunity to have those conversations after we pass this resolution moving forward. Thank you.
Mayor, Counselor Vazquez, I'll bring that forward to the Grants Team as well, and I'm sure Mr. Peely has conversations with the county, probably more than anybody else, so.
Mayor and Counsel, I'll take the lead on that. I haven't initiated that conversation, but I will do so.
Thank you, Ife. Thank you, Mayor.
So Counselor Vazquez, years ago, what the city would do is we would invite the county, the university, and the legislators. We'd have, sometimes we'd have a breakfast or lunch there at the convention center, and then, but for whatever reason, we kind of stopped that, and then we started, if you noticed, when the city has their priorities, they're more, something's small, and they put it in their, in their pocket. We found that was to be probably the best way to let the legislators know exactly what the city was looking for. I like your idea, and we've done that in the past. We found that, that other than, as was mentioned by Leanne, sometimes when those central-themed projects are needed by both city and county, you know, they have a little bit different angle, some of the things that they need, a little bit different, different funding of some sources, usually a lot of it is infrastructure that we were, we're fortunate that we already have. So I think that's probably why it was, but the whole purpose of that, really, was to get the legislators together so, one time, so they could hear everyone's proposals. It wasn't to help to parlay the success of the monies coming in, but more so to be cognizant of the legislators' time, so that they could just meet one time and hear city, county, university, state, and the local, smaller towns like Mesia. So that's not a bad idea, but I think with our lobbyist, Larry Haran, and then many of you all go to Santa Fe often and have their little pocket guide to what it is that the city's looking for. So I think that's why it kind of, just kind of, kind of fell, fell off the radar.
Counselor Flotis, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Leanne. As far as the Veterans Park and the money that's being spent there, is any, the work that's being done there, or proposed to be done there, does it take into account the expansion eventually, or is it going to be something we're doing now and then have to dig up because we didn't take into account that, you know, maybe the parking lot wasn't in the right place, or it isn't where the veterans want it? And I don't know if, oh, there's Kathy coming back. Cheer day, Kathy. Yeah, I just, I just want to know if that's coordinated, because as you know, it is a thorn at their side or our side, it's, the thorn's on our side, in terms of those requests that they have had, and that the veterans have had. And I think, I don't know if Mr. Enriquez is here today. No? Oh, here, there he is. And I don't know if there's been any more talk when they have their board meetings, but I do know two things. Number one, they don't want it to be, they don't want it to be called a park anymore. They want it to be called a memorial, and along the lines of what we have in Washington, DC. And I totally respect that and would support that. So along those lines, what the veterans, and this is not the official word, I'm not on that board, or a liaison, and Mr. Enriquez can correct me, it won't be the first time, but they want to call it a memorial, and the reason is because people use that lawn area as a soccer field or a baseball game, and they feel that it's disrespectful, and I totally agree with that. You know, having my father and two brothers serving, you know, in different wars, they deserve that respect. And they also want the playground moved, that playground area on the other side of the expansion of the parking lot, you know, with that land that was acquired. I think it was from Eddie Binns, or there was some kind of a something that, you know, trade or something. So is that taken into account, Ms. Matthews? And what they did say to me, and this was, I think, the chair, but it was just definitely not a meeting or official or anything, but what he did say, and I believe he was expressing the sentiments of other board members and other veterans, that there is a grass area beyond, you know, as you're walking to the park, beyond the picnic area, where kids could still have little baseball games or kick their soccer balls, but to move that playground area. Is that taken into account in any of this when you're laying out money and doing projects, Ms. Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Flotis, indeed, all of that is taken into account. We, several years ago, worked with the Veterans Advisory Board to conduct and implement a master plan for Veterans Memorial Park. That included the parking lot, other kinds of upgrades, and an extension of the memorial walkway in that master plan. That document was approved by council and is served as the guiding master plan for all the design that's occurring right now, with the parking lot, with the relocation of the playground, with the inclusion of a sort of a welcome center, in a way, a shade structure and restroom, a contemplative garden, and the like. So those features are included in the current plans, with the exception of the memorial walkway. Basically, the current plans include the parking lot, the sort of welcome center restroom, and the relocation, or the relocation of the playground to a space that's slightly further away on the other side, on the west side of the playground. And so those, those features are currently included in the planning and in the design that is covered by the scope that's intended for this funding.
Great. So thank you. I think that answers my question. Mr. Enriquez, do you have anything to add to that?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Counsel. Eric Enriquez, Assistant City Manager. Counselor Flotis, yes, I just want to add that the veterans are very much in support. Everything that Ms. Matthews stated, they've seen the designs, it's been presented at the board meetings, all the veterans are in support. They're even going to present to the legislators, they will be lobbying for this plan as well to get more support for the parking lot. It's a safety issue, need to expand for all the events that are held there, and so just to tell you, they are in support of this.
Thank you so much for the update, Mr. Enriquez, and thank you, Ms. Matthews, and thank you, Leanne. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leanne, especially for this morning, answering my questions back and forth via email. Would you move to the slide with the priorities, Leanne? It'll help me.
Oh. The summary, Counselor?
The summary is fine, Leanne. So, Leanne, would there be an opportunity to prioritize these options via how we voted for them moving forward in terms of ranking them top priority to the 10, basically how council voted for them? I think that would be my recommendation.
So Mayor, Counselor Gandara, so you're talking about, so that way, when we send this to Larry, we say, Larry, here's the ones that we want you to go after in a high priority? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. I just know that when we, when we had this item on the agenda a few weeks ago, Counselor Sorg, and I believe Counselor Vazquez wasn't here, and so I wanted to be sure that they gave their priorities, and then we ranked them based on their input.
Okay.
And as they get presented to the legislature, from my perspective, I think it has to be 1 through 10, because people will pick, right, what they want to, you know, how they want to fund these projects. So I think it important that we rank them. Secondly, my other question was about these larger projects, Leanne, which is the, which you explained via email, that these five were the larger projects, the Airport and Passenger Service, 37.5 million, the Truck Bypass Road to Santa Teresa, 200 million, the Green Industrial Park, 46.6 million, Water Lines and Water Tanks, 26 million, and the Downtown Public Safety- safety complex, 30 million, and I'm assuming not in any particular order. But you explained that these are for the ARPA capital funds, or if available, excess revenue for one-time capital investment. So I just wanted to be sure that somewhere, these are ranked, and that it also gets sent at some kind of resolution. And I think those are really important. And I, you know, Efo, I don't know if we want to talk to Larry about how they're presented, but I think we need to be very transparent and just out there with what our priorities are. I also agree with Councilor Vazquez that having these conversations with our municipalities, our neighboring municipalities is helpful as well. And let me see, did we consider the junior funding on this?
Mayor, I'll let Efo answer that question.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, we have, and we do have the list that, I guess the direction we've been given by Larry is to have some of these lists, some of these that we have on here, some of the smaller, I guess it's for smaller asks. We do have a list that doesn't, I guess it, we don't bring it to council typically. It's something that we've collected, though. And we, when and if the time comes, we have this list that's available. There are some things, I don't think it's a part of the presentation today, or we have that available, but we can, we can get to you on what we have. It is from the process that we've been through with the council, and we picked out smaller asks, and we just have it ready, just in case we're asked for that. I'm just learning about junior money, but we have considered that. But we'll get more information, though.
Yeah, no, I don't even think, when I first got elected into almost a second term, that I was familiar with junior monies until the new administration came in and we started to ask. And so, it's never come to council. I think it should, and I think council should have a way in basically vetting those priorities. So I'd recommend that they come to council and we prioritize what they are. I think those are very important items as well moving forward. And with that, Mayor, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilor Sorg?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. DeMooch.
You want to remove your mask?
Thank you. I was also talking about, wondering about why only 10. And I see one reason is they're huge. So that is one factor. But I was wondering about a supplemental list of smaller projects, too. I'm looking forward to adding one or two projects on that list, the little ones. Okay, I was also wondering about the Veterans Park, too. I know we acquired the land through a trade for the parking at the Veterans Park. I'm just kind of curious, what right-of-way do we need for this project?
Mayor, Councilor Sorg, I'll ask Kathy to enter. Also, too, in the ICIP, we always try to be, as you know, Ms. Bassford's always telling you, that we always try to be very open to the possibility of anything happening. So I think part of the language in the ICIP that we have for construction just always says right-of-way as well. It's just there as a just-in-case type deal, but I'll ask Kathy to clarify on that.
Just routine messaging, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sorg, that's correct.
Okay, so in other words, yeah, in other words, you don't have anything that you, at the top of your head, know that we need a right-of-way for?
There's potential that we would need to create a right-hand turn lane into the parking lot. And so, we wanted to make sure that that kind of work could be covered as well with the grant.
Yeah, yeah, we should own that land already, anyway. But we'll see, you might need more. Yeah, thank you. And the other question I had was on the Tellurium Spruce project. It calls about land acquisitions and so forth. We got a chunk of money from the state legislature here about four, five years ago. Was that never used? It was a return to the state? Or what happened to it? I know it was a pretty good-sized piece of money, and here it comes.
Mayor, Councilor Sorg, I'll let Tony Trevino answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Sorg. Yes, we did get a substantial amount about three years ago from the capital outlet for that intersection. That was used to study that corridor, as well as other intersections, and how they work together. Right now, we're in the phase of implementing a temporary fix, some striping, some additional kind of lanes under there. And what this money will do for the future build-out, which will include, they call it a T-bone intersection, where there'll be a constant through-street on there, constant lanes with the turning movement to the left. So it's going to be a totally different configuration, and that's what we're going to be going for with this money, based on that study that happened a couple of years ago.
Okay, so that was for the study. So we don't need any of this 1.5 million for a study, then?
No, this is actually the construction of it.
Okay, good. Yeah, so therefore, it's a lane that would not be controlled by a light, it would be constant straight, no turn. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Appreciate that clarification. And, oh, one little thing that may or may not, I've got a feeling it will, though, matter, is where these projects, where this money's going to be spent. Which congressional or legislative district is a better way to say it, will these projects be in? If you could just add that to as part of the information, because legislators like to put a little money in their own districts. Just add that to the list of information to give to Larry. He'll want to know that, I'm pretty sure. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I'll simply say that I approve, I would think all these projects are very worthy, and we need to have them. So I approve them all. I just add a little, one or two little minor ones would be all I would ask for. And I've already asked city manager for one of them. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Yeah, that was brought up even the initial time about adding more, and, you know, staff and I concur with what they said, is, you know, we don't, one, we don't want to be too greedy, and two, you know, there's only so much, and we know that there's supposed to be really flushed with money, but, you know, wanted to focus on the ones that we can realistically get done. I mean, they're going to go through that vetting process. I bet you that the requests up there in Santa Fe is going to be probably totaling three to four times what it was this past legislative session. But, you know, we just wanted to make a case for those, and so I appreciate your comments. Anybody else? About members of the public? Okay, see none. Christine?
This is on the motion to approve Resolution 22-062. Councilor Beta Stube?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Sorg?
Yes.
Councilor Flores?
Yes.
Councilor Gondeta?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, item 7.5, Council Bill Number 22-010, Ordinance Number 2988.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Sorg, second by Councilor Beta Stube, and Ceci Vasconcelos will be discussing.
Good afternoon. My name is Ceci Vasconcelos, and I am the Art Program Coordinator in the Quality of Life Department, for the record. I'm here today to present the proposed percent for art ordinance for approval. It's important to go through the phases that the ordinance has gone through to understand how it has evolved to its current draft. The Los Cruces Public Art Program was tasked with writing a funding ordinance as part of the master plan. They began to draft it in 2018 with input from David Dallahan, the former Assistant City Manager. The funding options were discussed amongst the Art Coordinator, City Management, the Treasury Office, and the Finance Office. The City Art Board anticipated the ordinance going to City Council in April of 2020. But we know what happened next. The COVID pandemic shut down many offices and suspended City Art Board meetings. In September 2020, the initial draft ordinance was completed and submitted to the bond board on the advice from Treasury. The draft was returned, redlined, and with questions about the feasibility of the funding mechanism as written. The draft was put on hold for further development and analysis of other ordinance models. In January 2021, I came on board as the new Art Program Coordinator and resumed the community outreach, researched other public art ordinances from similar cities, and consulted with the City of Albuquerque that has a very successful program and funding ordinance with similar structure as the City of Los Cruces. In the summer of 2021, the second draft was submitted to the bond board, who provided helpful input that resulted in the current ordinance draft. This final draft has been reviewed by the Quality of Life Director and the Assistant City Manager. It was presented to the City Art Board and Quality of Life Policy Review Committee with approvals to move forward from each. Major points you need to know are, the public art funding ordinance is but one funding mechanism for the public art program. The ordinance is written as flexible as possible so that it can remain relevant for years to come. The Art Board and Coordinator can set restrictions as needed through the description of the GO bond, and it can be reviewed and updated after five years. The ordinance specifies that 2% of eligible GO bonds be allocated for public art. The ordinance includes a percentage be allocated for the maintenance of the existing city public art collection. This is recommended as a best practice for public art programs. The funding is purpose-based and can be used for projects that fall under that same purpose that the bond was originally intended. And the wording of the GO bonds is important, and the city will work with the bond board to write them to best support public art. As mentioned earlier, this ordinance is only one funding mechanism for the Los Cruces Public Art Program. We are prepared to pursue grants, partnerships, and private fundraising, and work to create a budget for general funds that can be used toward projects and programs. We also receive art and public places funding from New Mexico Arts in collaboration with local, state-funded projects. While revenue bonds are not included in the ordinance, since these types of bonds are not usually written for projects where including art is appropriate, they are still an option if the project fits the public art requirement. We have made a few minor amendments to the public art funding ordinance. Exhibit A is written. These amendments were recommended by finance for clarity and consistency of the language when implementing the ordinance once approved. So if you look under Section 2-1278, we removed Item B that read, "Percent for art, as described in Division A above, should be included as part of the capital improvement program budget." The line is not needed due to budget already approving CIP budget items. And if you look further down at Item D, the sentence is revised to read, "Percent for art funds shall be tracked separately." And then, Item H is moved up and is now Item B. The last sentence in this paragraph that reads, "The appropriation will be made at the same time as the appropriation for all projects with the capital improvement program," has been deleted for consistency purposes. And I gave Ms. Christine copies of the revised ordinance. Oops. Sorry, I didn't show you that slide. So, here are councils' voting options. I will now stand for questions or discussion, and there are staff members here to answer specific questions.
Okay, thank you, Ceci. Councilor Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ceci Vasconcelos. What is the 2% going for? Is it earmarked for any specific project or type of project in so far as public art or, yeah, public art is concerned?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, the 2% would be in line with the GO bond project that it is tied with. So it would be earmarked for that project, or?
Kind of what we have at the Animal Service Center and at Fire Station Number Three.
That is correct.
I see. So, this ordinance is, it's consistent, well, it's consistent with the state statute. Is that correct?
Mayor and Counselor, yes, it is.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much, Ceci. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? Councilor Sorg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ceci. I didn't follow you very well on the changes. You said there was a change in Section 1278, Part B. Could you go through that again?
Mayor and Counselor Sorg, sure. Let me go back to that slide, right there. So, and again, this was just for clarity. So, item?
So B is deleted totally?
Right, the original Item B sentence was deleted, yes.
Okay, so and H is put in its place?
Right.
Okay, that I missed somehow?
Yeah, I know, it's a little confusing.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a little question. In the right place, could projects for art have a living piece of art?
Mayor and Counselor Sorg, what exactly do you mean by living?
A tree. Is it possible?
Councilor Sorg, I don't see why it's not. We can definitely consider that.
Okay. A special tree with maybe a plaque on it that would commemorate something? I don't know. I'm just, I'm no artist. I'm thinking out loud here. That's all. I just wondered, and put that forth as a suggestion, if it's appropriate.
Of course, it would have to fit the description of what public art is, but we'll look at the master plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm done.
Councilor? Bencomo, Councilor Flores, Mayor Protim?
I just had a procedural question. Do we need to make a motion for the amendments to be included?
I believe so. Did you need that, you need these incorporated into this ordinance?
Mayor and Counselors, yes.
Okay, so can we do that maybe after we finish?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll circle back to you.
Thank you.
Councilor Flores?
Yeah, for clarification, I, too, had the same question, similar questions to Councilor Sorg and Bencomo. So what you handed to us, Ceci, is in fact what the proposed ordinance is?
Mayor and Councilor Flores, yes.
Not what came originally?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's all we need to look at. And, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ceci, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ceci. Mayor, okay, Ceci, so this is 2% for city and 2% for this, it's 2% for the city, so a total of 4% if it lies with the state?
Counselor and, I mean, Mayor and Counselor Gondeta, no, it would be 2% total.
So what is the state's allocation?
Mayor and Counselor Gondeta, so the 2% would be written into the GO bond ballot item. So it would be part of that GO bond language. So, whatever that amount of money that is approved through that GO bond, we would get the 2% from that. So, does that answer your question?
It doesn't, Ceci. So the state has already allocated, right, based on their state legislation, a certain percentage, correct?
Let me defer that to Rebecca.
Okay.
I think she has something to say.
Hi, Rebecca.
Good afternoon. Rebecca Slaughter, deputy director for Quality of Life. For the record, Mayor and Counselor Gandera, the 2% for the state is for state legislative money in art and public places, which is a completely different process.
Okay, got it.
This is for city geo bond.
Thank you.
Money, so there are two different, separate processes.
Thank you, I was getting caught up in that, I'm sorry.
It happens a lot, and that's why we made sure that we called it two very different things, especially in the CIP. In the CIP, it's AIPP versus the city art process.
Got it, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca, for the explanation. Thank you, Sessi. I know you were trying, but I was not getting it. Okay, thank you, Mayor, those are all my questions.
Excuse me.
Did you have another question, Councilor Flotas?
Thank you, yes, or comment. So, Sessi and Rebecca, it's in addition to what already exists with the state, because previously we only had 1%, right? No?
Mayor and Councilor Flotas, are we still talking about the AIPP, art in public places?
Yes, and I think I had that wrong, because Rebecca's coming back.
Art in public places is 1%.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So now we have three, three sources, 1%, 2%, 2% for go bond, 1% for art and public places, and then the 2% from the state. Under certain circumstances, different, there's different sources for artwork in the city of Las Cruces. Did I get that right? I knew I'd get it right after the 10th time. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sessi. Yeah, this is exciting. I'm glad we're putting, building this into our future geo bond projects. Just a question for, about the projects themselves. So I see here that utility and flood-related capital projects are exempt from the, from the 2%, is that right?
Counselor and, I mean, Mayor and Counselor Vazquez, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so are we, are we then electing to use this 2% or are we codifying it on every single geo bond project moving forward that's not considered a utility or flood-related project? For example, a trail project or a, you know, of course, our local parks, but similar to the fire station in addition to a public building? All of those would, would require to have 2% for a public art component added to them as long as they're not considered utility or flood-related? Is that correct?
So Mayor and Councilor Vazquez, if the project aligns with the public art master plan, and it fits what public art is, and it makes sense to include it in that project, then yes, that, that we would definitely, and yes, this would, this would almost make it automatically that it would be considered.
Yes, so that's what I'm asking, is it, it's automatic, no matter, as long as it's not a utility or flood-related project, that money is allocated as soon as the voters approve it, and we, as a city council, approve those projects to go on the ballot? And then, and then from there, the city art board, what role do they have in actually then specifying what type of art goes here, or what is the next steps in terms of figuring out what the right project might be for any of these projects?
Mayor and Counselor Vazquez, we would look at the priorities and our performance measures and see where art is needed. Then they would have a hand in writing the RFP for that project and putting it out, deciding whether it's a local type of art piece that we're looking for, I mean, done by local artists or done by, you know, more of a national call for artists. And it just follows the same process that we follow for any other art project.
This is exciting. Thank you so much for bringing this ordinance forward. I think a welcome component to our future geo bond projects that we won't have to allocate funding for. It'll be there every time, so thank you so much, Sessi, and to your staff as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor, anyone else? Members of the public? Okay, Councilor Bencomo, did you want to make that amendment?
Sure. Mayor, I move to amend the resolution with the recommended amendments in exhibit A.
Very good, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Councilor Bencomo, second by Councilor Beta Stube to include exhibit A as the amendment. Is that going to be satisfactory? Yeah, good. Okay, so move in a second, so on the amendment?
This is on the motion to amend ordinance 2988 to replace exhibit A with the corrected version. Councilor Beta Stube?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Sorg?
Yes.
Councilor Flotas?
Yes.
Councilor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so now we're back on the main motion. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Seeing none, Christine?
This is on the motion to approve ordinance 2988 as amended. Councilor Beta Stube?
Yes.
Councilor Vazquez?
Yes.
Councilor Bencomo?
Yes.
Councilor Sorg?
Yes.
Councilor Flotas?
Yes.
Councilor Gandera?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, so now we're going to go to board appointments, which I don't believe we have any. Notice of proposed, proposed ordinances, 9.1, council bill number 22-011, ordinance number 2989.
Bring that forward.
Bring it forward. And now we're going to go to city council member board reports and comment. So just one thing that, and I know she's not here, I had emailed Jennifer a week or so ago, 10 days ago. I just wanted to see if council, if they had any appetite for this. You know, I wanted to be a little bit proactive, as you know, this seems like we're having a lot of different residents setting up tents, places throughout the community, and what I was asking Jennifer was, you know, for whatever reason, they choose not to be at Camp Hope, maybe because they don't like the limitations, you know, you have to be looking for a job, you can only stay there for a certain amount of time, you have to basically, you know, help out. And, and so I was thinking, if we could, if the city could look at some land in that vicinity, in that, you know, nearby, have a place that those who wish to, to park or, you know, set up a tent, they could have it within a different area that's probably a little bit better protected, it'll be close to the facilities, and, and then that way there, when public safety, police, fire, they come across someone instead of just, you know, let's say they're right there on a parking, on the sidewalk, well, you know, they can't be blocking the sidewalk, but if we had a place for them to go that was free of charge, perhaps that might be something to look at. And so what I was hoping to do was at least have council to allow management team to look at it and then provide some feedback on it, and this way here, I think it'd be safer, and it would be better for those residents instead of just sitting up throughout the city. I don't have anything, because I emailed her, wanted to see if that was something that, you know, is far from a legal standpoint, and, and so I'll just wait for her to get back. I just wanted to let you know about that. And that's really, that's really about it. I'll just turn over to Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. I would be amenable to looking into something like that. Right off the bat, I have some concerns about upkeep and oversight in, in the sense of, of making sure, well, trash and that they get the services that they need, so I, I think having a conversation with the community of hope would, and maybe other organizations that might want to entertain the idea. I also feel like this is something that we definitely would, would like to discuss further in regards to that supportive housing, right? In my estimate, I love that we have Camp Hope, but I also feel we can do better as an organization, as a city, to provide a safe place with running water and basically roof over folks' heads, so I think there's a, I'm not critical of, of Camp Hope, I think they do a wonderful job, and I'm very supportive of their mission. I also think that, that we could look at some other options moving forward. Just reminding folks about my public safety meeting tomorrow evening at Home Builders Association at 6:00. And, thank you, Jamie and Carla and my student Paris for organizing and working to, to be prepared for tomorrow evening. That's really all I have today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilor Flotas?
Thank you, Mayor. So some of you know that four years ago, I was a delegate to the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, but it was overwhelming. I mean, it was, it was in Bonn. This year, it's in COP26, Convention of the Parties. It's taking place in Glasgow, and the news isn't too cheery insofar as people committing to eliminate, or countries committing to eliminate the greenhouse emissions, gas, whatever, greenhouse emissions. At any rate, there's, there is a commitment, it is intended to be the first carbon neutral COP. Signatories commit to publish before the end of 2023 the organization's pathway to achieve net zero by 2050 with an interim target in line with the Paris Agreement. And then the comment there is that the Paris Agreement has not been fully, it's, it hasn't been fulfilled. That was a Paris Agreement of 2015, it was December of 2015, and Obama was the president. So there's been some kind of, there's been an inconsistency, and there's a fear that some of the India, the countries such as the poorest countries such as Indonesia, Indonesia will be underwater, I mean, they're just, it's just awful. But the good thing is that, and then, of course, we all know, probably, we all should know, that India right now is having its worst ever, and there isn't a commitment, this is the sad part. There are countries that, several years ago, six years ago, countries agreed that there'd be no carbon emissions and they'd be eliminated. Now they're only saying that maybe we can commit to lowering carbon emissions. So I just wanted to report on COP26, and it makes me really happy, and I'm going to miss Gil Sorg a lot because he's really been, he's really been the proponent of a lot of climate change efforts here in the city. So in communicating with my friends who are there, you know, I told them that we're just doing everything we can here in the city of Las Cruces, and we think globally but act locally. The other thing I wanted to share is that our very own Dolores Huerta was featured in the most recent issue of AARP, and they also had other Latino-American icons. It recognizes that she's from Las Cruces. It also recognizes that she's the one that began with si se puede, yes, we can. It's attributed to Cesar, and this article also, also recognizes that she was shoulder to shoulder with Cesar Chavez, and in many cases was the better organizer among, well, she really was, she was very effective, kind of like Yolanda, you know, they can just organize anything and everybody. Now, I don't think, I didn't mean it that way, they, very good organizers. So anyway, and, and so Carlos Santana, you know, from that group, I can't remember the rock group, but, huh? Well, yeah, Santana, that's right. Carlos Santana from Santana, he wrote a little article. Anyway, just, I'm just so happy that, that she's given the credit she deserves and that she's recognized as New Mexican. The other thing, trash, so we like to trash, we like to trash, we like to share what we did this weekend. So I joined my AARP group. We're not called Trash Buddies, but that's what I call them, because there is a group called Trash Buddies, and we're committed to go, we adopted a spot along Batan Memorial East, near the discount, that Big O discount tire, or whatever it's called. And so we go out once a month, and we were out there two hours Saturday morning, and it's amazing. And I, you know, we, we're wondering now that the, our, if, when, if and when the new ordinance goes into effect, there'll be a big change in terms of plastic bags. They're very difficult to get at, and I have scratches and, and, and I, it was hard picking out some of the, some of the thorns and things. But anyway, what I want to encourage everybody is to get in touch with Keep Las Cruces Beautiful, get in touch with James Woods, everybody, many people complain about the trash, but, you know, it's not enough to complain, you have to do something about it. And we have a fantastic Keep Las Cruces Beautiful program here, it's headed by James Woods and under the supervision of Sonia Delgado. And, and there's various Trash Buddies throughout the city. So when you see an area that's kind of cleaned up and it's next to another area that isn't, it's probably because Trash Buddies were out there. So I want to encourage you. And then I also wanted to definitely support what Mayor Protem's Gandera, I believe she initiated the public safety meetings, and I think this is the fourth in a series. And I want to also encourage everyone who can be there. It's tomorrow, Tuesday, November 16th at 6:00 PM at the Home Builders, Home Builders Association on Main Street, and it's kind of hard to get to because it's back a little bit, you have to turn, it's really not on Main Street, it's off a little bit. But, yeah, we need to have that, we really need to have that dialogue with our citizenry here, our residents here. And let's see, do we have a meeting next week? Yeah, we have one meeting next week. So anyway, that's it for today, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Sorg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, since I don't have too many more meetings on the council here, I wanted to say a few words about the city and the city council and so forth. I know, but it's going to take me a month to get through it all. Through the many years on the city council, we've passed many, many resolutions, and I get a feeling that the council doesn't hear what happens to some of those resolutions, maybe a lot of them. We get them passed, passed unanimously, and, and some are just, like one we had today, a message to our Congress about immigration and undocumented immigrants, rather, and that's fine, that, that goes to the right people, I hope, and that's the end of it. But there's a lot of resolution that we deal with here in the city. Just to give you an, an example or two, we passed a resolution on electric vehicles for the city fleet. We, to some extent, have passed, to some extent here, has passed on our strategic plan and our climate action plan. We passed a resolution on community solar and also energy transition plans that we've had, just to name a few of the most recent ones. There are others, and I think we can all probably find one or two that, wow, whatever happened to that resolution, you would never hear about it anymore. So I think the council should be kept abreast of all our resolutions, albeit briefly, and no details have to be given. The city council is not responsible for monitoring these resolutions. It should be something that staff should be doing for us. And then, at the same time, I feel that our sustainability officer should be more involved in ones like community solar and our energy transition. That is where our expertise is in the staff, and I hope that's the case. It happens to be 3.8 in our strategic plan. I haven't heard whether that's been done or not. I'm patient and we need to be patient to get these things done, of course. And as part of this, referring to our COP twenty-six reference that Councilor Flores has brought up today, we can all do our part as far as climate change and the various things that go along with that. The city of Las Cruces needs to be working towards a net zero energy city, the whole city, not just this building, not just the city government, but the whole city. We can be a net zero, meaning that the city does not add greenhouse gases to the atmosphere. We can add some, but they have to be taken back and put back into, out of the atmosphere. And that, of course, is carbon dioxide and methane to the air. We need to do, need some new net zero codes in this city as part of our all-electric buildings, including efficiency in our energy in our buildings in the city, both public and private. So, in other words, we don't need to waste energy. We don't want to waste energy, I should say. We need to plan for our existing buildings to be working towards net zero. Las Cruces has begun. We have all our traffic signals in the city as well as all of our street lights in the city, our LED, using from ten to fifteen percent of the electricity that we would have used with conventional electric light bulbs. Requiring, we need to require a benchmarking for all our city buildings. We need to keep track of how we're doing as far as our greenhouse gas emissions. I have a sentence here that I started and I didn't finish reading it, writing it, so I don't know what that is. When all electric vehicles aren't available, we need to concentrate on getting hybrid vehicles, be they trucks or cars. In other words, an electric plug-in vehicle. And the difference just with hybrids alone is between fifty miles per gallon and twenty miles per gallon on average. That's a significant reduction in the amount of oil or gas that is burned. Codes. There's, there are ways in some cities that the code in that city penalizes for, I'll call them dirtier cars. In other words, internal combustion engine cars. And, and you see around the city here, certain places have parking for low emission vehicles. That's good. We got to enforce that, though. How many of you all seen a big truck in one of those parking spots? They need to be enforced. And, but we should do that, have that kind of a code for all parking lots throughout the city. I need to increase our charging stations. We've got to start. We need to keep going on that. We need to have more available. Okay. There's some cities have, and we do it too, block off certain streets for walking only from time to time. And of course, we do that on Farmer's Market Day, downtown, on Main Street. Maybe we should think about doing it a few other times, too, where it's only walkable and cars don't run down Main Street. And then, of course, we need to be, we need to have a, have a long way to go. We have a long way to go for being a more bike and pedestrian-friendly city. That, that we need more emphasis and more effort. We have a strategic plan that has some of these things in it, but who has a copy of that? I don't think I was ever given one, if there was one printed. I missed out, missed out if that was the case. Yeah, we need a printed copy of our strategic plan. We did that before and I haven't seen one since. A sample of what needs to be done is on that, that. And also, here's another idea that some cities have done, and that is to think electric districts. For example, the proposal I've done already, the East Loma Development, have that be an electric, all-electric district. And then, have that expand to other areas of the city. Remember the city in California called Chula Vista? You all remember that? Chula Vista? That has home builders out there building total electric subdivisions. This is being done. This is not a scary thing to do. Okay, I'll skip that. Think, what can we, what can we do to encourage a net zero industry even out at the industrial, industrial park? Can we make that a net zero industry area out there, a zone, shall we say? And and then, last but not least, have an urban forest effort that is stronger than we are doing today. As I, as a big tree advocate, I am, I telling you that, you know, the trees have multiple benefits. And then, I don't think I need to go through them. No, no, I want to say a word or two about COVID-19. As you all know, there's been an increase in cases here in New Mexico as well as many other places in the, in the country. And so, I agree with the governor when she said that booster shots can be given to everybody above eighteen years of age. We need to encourage the children to have vaccinations, too. There's a piece in the U.S. Constitution that refers to science. Read it. And then, I would not disapprove, or rather, I would approve for any mandate to vaccinate where we can, be it in the cities or other places. Last word, and it's a personal word. My sister's birthday is today and she's been having a lot of health issues. So, I'm wishing her the best on her birthday for her heart and, and other issues of health. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Benkomo?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilor Sorg, for your words. Looking forward to more words of wisdom as you think about your departure. Yes, Mayor, I, you know, as we were sitting here, President Biden signed the infrastructure bill, the $1 trillion infrastructure bill. And so, you know, that, that's going to be an incredible opportunity for cities like ours, for counties like ours, for state, for a state like ours. You know, amongst many items, though, it includes about $600 billion for roads, dams, public transit, airports, water projects, broadband, things that I feel like are very relevant to our city right now, to maybe even potentially failing infrastructure or lack of infrastructure. And so, you know, I, as soon as city staff understand how that will work, if hopefully works like ARPA and money comes directly to the city and not through the state, I would like to request a work session so that we can talk about project, priority projects like perhaps the eighty-two miles of road ways that need to be completely redone in the city. So, I, you know, I just wanted to bring that up and hope that we can schedule some sort of work session soon. I'm assuming not before the end of the year, but certainly early in the year, EFO. So, thank you and I hope that you start getting information soon, if you haven't already. I completely forgot two weeks ago to bring this up again. I know that we passed that, or definitely more than two weeks ago at this point. Who, what is time? When we passed the land acknowledgement resolution, I really do want EFO, the city, to start looking at how we change, we take the initiative, the city takes the initiative on changing Squaw Mountain Road. Even just saying it makes me deeply uncomfortable and I think that should be incumbent upon us and not a petition-driven process by constituents. I think that we should take initiative on that and begin to change the name of that road. There's many problematic names, but if I was going to pick any one of them, it would be that one. This morning, I had the incredible pleasure of visiting a classroom at Centennial High School. One of my friends, Meloisa Torres, teaches New Mexico History and Enlace there, and she always makes it a point to invite me. And it was a classroom with a variety of different ages, like fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds even, people who were close to vote. Honestly, the things they brought up to me were sort of incredible because they talked about public transit. They talked about the gaps in transit and how they would love to take public transit to schools, but they don't have stops close enough. They talked to me about housing and about the quality of our housing stock in the city and how bad it is. They talked to me about potholes and the lack of activities for young people in the city, from recreational, a need for a new recreational center to, to, to things like youth work programs. And we take young people for granted sometimes. And I think, we think of them as the leaders of tomorrow, the leaders, they'll be leaders in ten, twenty years, but you know what? They're leaders right now. And so, in the way here, I was thinking about how, what are better ways for us to, to listen to them intentionally, not just like random invites to classrooms? But I would like to request that one of the Go Bond Public Input Meetings be specifically for young people, for high school kids, working with a consultant to do that and working with LCPS to invite young people to a public listening session for them specifically, I think would be an excellent way to, you know, begin to form projects that they think are important. So, I would like to make that request. And then, let's see, what else do I have? And then, just lastly, I know that there was a fire at the old Horse and Hound over the weekend, and I just want to make sure that we are kept up to date regarding how that will affect the project, the expansion of Casa de Peregrinos, if, you know, insurance will cover that or if the city will need to provide additional funding to make sure that project stays on course. I know that it was potentially pretty badly damaged. And so, EFO, I can also talk about it in our one-to-one, but I think, I just want to make sure that the public knows, you know, how, how that will impact the expansion. And that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Before I get to Councilor Vazquez, if I recall, Councilor Benkomo, Mitch Landrout, the former mayor of New Orleans, was just appointed to oversee the infrastructure bill. So, we'll, we'll be getting a lot of info as to how that's going to be coming down. So, of course, I'll pass it on to EFO and his team. Councilor Vazquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Sorg, for your continued advocacy. That has been consistent since you've been on the council for clean energy solutions that we can champion at the city. I really appreciate that and agree with you on most points, if not all those points. Today, on our consent agenda, we had a, we passed the new joint powers agreement for the Metropolitan Planning Organization in the Policy Committee and, which is now actually a policy board under the new JPA. But what that did essentially is both Mesia and Dona Anna County and the city of Las Cruces are part of this Metropolitan Planning Organization and help to essentially vet and support transportation projects from pedestrian projects all the way up to, you know, highway projects, I-25, I-10 and that kind of thing, working with our partners at New Mexico Department of Transportation. So, there's not a bunch of new updates, which is why I think it was on the consent agenda. It's more of an internal organizational restructuring of, of that committee that will allow things to flow a little bit more smoothly. The city is currently the fiscal overseer, the financial kind of entity that actually handles the MPO's legal status. And I just want to, I want to thank our legal team for, for vetting that and going through that. It makes, Mr. Andrew Ray, who's the MPO coordinator, I think it makes his job a lot easier. But wanted just to let you know that there was some internal restructuring of how the board will work. And with this infrastructure money that's coming in, this is actually probably the most exciting time to be on the MPO is the next several years because I got to admit, those aren't the most exciting meetings. And so, and so now that we have money potentially coming in the door and projects to vet and even projects to speed up, I think that MPO board is going to be actually crucial to vetting projects in our region together with our partners. Sorry, Andrew, if you're listening, it's not you, it's, it's me as the chair. We also, I'm also going to be chairing the last several meetings for the South Central Solid Waste Authority. And one of the things I want to just continue to bring up as we move forward with, with the future of the authority, one is that it is now, under its new JPA, it now has the financial or the fiscal autonomy to go after capital outlay projects itself. And it will actually be requesting a couple of different capital outlay projects, including a home and road transfer station that's actually very expensive. But again, I think that coordination with the county and the city, that being a quasi-governmental agency that both the county and city participate in, this is another joint project that will actually benefit both the city and the county because it will benefit the South Central Solid Waste Authority. But what I wanted to bring up was, we continue to have challenges with our recycling program and the, and the solvency of our recycling program. The recycling industry and the recycling economy in this country is at a very fragile point. There's really very little, in terms of, of, of a market for the non-paper products that we used to ship to China. And so, we're having a tough time actually getting some of those products that aren't the cardboard products out to market or even selling them for a profit at, at some point. We are just giving them away pretty much to sustain, to sustain our recycling program. And so, we've negotiated some short-term contracts with Friedman Recycling, who's lost a bunch of staff and we're actually helping them out with their own, some of our drivers are actually contracting with Friedman Recycling to supplant the drivers that they don't have, even though they're a contractor who's supposed to be having those drivers. So, we've talked about a circular economy using recycled products for a long time and building our own MRF or our own kind of recycling center for different products that could be repurposed and perhaps feed into different manufacturing or assembly or small business opportunities here. And I want us to continue to think about that as we move forward into the future because, yes, our recycling is still getting picked up. We still have our blue bins, but, you know, behind the scenes, there's a lot of negotiations happening to keep the program solvent, not have to raise rates for our ratepayers because, because it is a tough market right now. So, just keep that in mind as we move forward. The El Paso Corridor, so before I came here, I was, did an interview with KVIA in front of the old Payless shoe source that is there on Wyatt and El Paso. And there was a couple of broken windows, a bunch of tags, people had gone in and tore up some stuff. Inside a building that's covered in windows that you can see through, so there's nothing in there. But, but there's still vandalism happening, people are still breaking in. Looked like it was pretty recent and I, I didn't mean for it to be kind of that kind of visual backdrop for what, the kind of work that we need to see on El Paso to revitalize that area, but it ended up kind of working, working that way. But the message I gave to the public through that radio interview and that I've given here on this, on the city council is, is that when we move forward with the resolution to adopt the recommendations and the map for El Paso, it has to be followed up by concrete action. And it has to be followed up with those studies for those four different And it has to be followed up with those studies for those four different recommended metropolitan redevelopment areas that are part of the study itself so that we can start planning some capital outlay projects or planning some, you know, streetscape redevelopment projects so that we can start, so that we can incorporate some of those into what we're doing with our new zoning policy and our new development code that we're working on today so that we have complementary zoning to these different metropolitan redevelopment areas and for economic development staff to start looking at what kind of business incentives we can offer to people within these MRAs or within the district as a whole that's actually going to bring some reinvestment back into the, into the district, into that particular area. So, I'm excited for that work to continue. On that note, there will be a cleanup on El Paseo that Las Cruces Police Department is initiating. In addition to, I think there's a Keep Las Cruces Beautiful cleanup of District One as well, but I will be there Saturday. I think Councilor Ben Como will be there as well. But thank you and big shout out to LCPD for organizing that this weekend from nine to twelve, I believe, eight to twelve. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Councilor Vazquez. Councilor Beto Stuvey?
Thank you, Mayor. About a week and a half ago, I attended the Municipal League Annual Meeting where we adopted resolutions mostly focusing on finance, intergovernmental relations, and taxation, but we did have some priorities within public safety and economic development and community, all of which I have with me as well, and I'm happy to give out the priorities that were voted on, and I have copies for staff as requested.
Can you send that to Christine?
Yeah, I'll send it to Christine. Thank you. The second item, I know that we saw the Complete Streets Ordinance go through our Health Policy Review Committee. I know that it's been asked for by multiple members on the dais here, and so I'm just looking for an update on where it stands and when we can potentially be able to see it before us as a whole to vote on. The third is for our community schools. This week, I will be missing our Oversight Committee to participate in the interviews for a new community school manager. I look forward to be able to choose and have a new manager with our six schools. And we also would like to give a special thank you to Ms. Margaret Schultz, who donated a piano to Booker T. Washington Community School in August. And I know they're very happy to be able to have this beautiful piano, and so thank you again to Mrs. Margaret Schultz. And then, this Saturday, I will be at the farmer's market with Save the Children, Family Engagement, and they also work with Early Childhood Development. They are having a reading time, and so I will be reading to hopefully a bunch of preschool-aged children. And that is all of my updates for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Sorry, I have a few things.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor. I was just going to say I agree with Councilor Beto Stuvey on bringing forward the Complete Streets Ordinance. I know we've talked about that for quite some time, and I think it's time for us to discuss it and figure that out. Thank you, Mayor. Also agree.
Yes, Mayor Portem.
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry, Mayor. I wanted to bring up, I've been receiving several emails from folks about the TNR policy and budget. I want to understand more in detail where the city is at in relation to that. We keep getting some mixed messages about the animal codes unable to, you know, bring that forward, have the budget to even start some of that. So, I want to see if we could get an update on that. I wanted to thank EFO for your support and commitment as it relates to working with Barrow College and putting on our health fair. On Friday, we had a little over eighty people show up, be it staff and/or the public participating in the health fair. We had various screening, screenings that took place. We had Mesia Valley Pharmacy from the downtown, who's new in the area, come and provide COVID vaccines and the flu shots. So, that was great. We also have scheduled a meeting, excuse me, another health fair in February, I believe. I don't know if February 20th is standing out in my head, but I will make sure to send the information. Mr. Peely, if we can get, make sure that staff is aware of that. We talked about moving it to different areas just to get folks, to just make it easily accessible to our staff, but we're not sure that there's room in any other places. I thought maybe the possibility of having it at Mersheid Center might be something that we can look at. Now, just to remind council, this was one of the things as part of the reduction of premiums for our staff, but looking more deeply about the root causes as to why the high cost of premiums and just the high cost of our, you know, folks. And we found several things, right? People reporting to emergency, not having a provider. And so, as you know, if you can detect some of these chronic conditions early on, the better all of us are for that. So, this is sort of some of the work that I've done, not only to advocate with Mr. Peely, but to really examine where we're at as city staff in relation to being healthy. And that also goes along with the Occupational Health Survey, EFO, that we're looking at. I hadn't heard back from you in regards to the potential proposal that was sent to you a few weeks ago related to that. So, we have a understanding of where, surveying the staff and understanding where they are, both internally and externally, and their physical and mental health. And then, I visited a home off of Martha and Fairbanks. Mayor, if you remember, they mentioned you going, we closed Fairbanks off and a long time ago, right? About ten years ago. But this family, unfortunately, the father passed away, and they're getting the house ready for sale. And as they are moving and/or taking out the big cactus that was in the back of their yard, they noticed that the buildup that occurred by staff, right, as they were closing that owl, has made their fence collapse some. And so, the folks were very nice and amenable, but they wanted to see what, if anything, can be done. So, I wasn't sure if that particular Fairbanks is being overseen by us, right? There's a lot of weeds in that area. I'm assuming that it's our responsibility to clean that up and maintain that area there. It's now being used as a pass-through, right, for pedestrians and for the folks on that, that live in that area to access their backyard if they have a fence. And so, David and Mr. Terrazas, they have all been great to reply back and gather information, but I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that here today as well. And then, lastly, we had the gazebo, the meeting at Pioneer Park in the evening. Thank you to Parks and Rec for being there and having the meeting. It was on the gazebo. We're moving forward on rehabbing that gazebo and getting it to, it's a historical, like in the, I don't know, nineteen hundreds, if you will. So, staff and the consultant who they hired had some excellent renderings, conceptual drawings of what it can look like, and it's amazing to see. So, you know, we have the money just to start some of that, but not the additional monies. And of course, that was one of my items, not to forget, as part of my priority for budget cycle coming up. And so, with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. I'm trying to think, that was about seventeen years ago. So, from an insurance standpoint, I don't think it's going to be covered because it doesn't cover earth movement, but I don't know if the city can take a look at it. I don't know. EFO, you know how to drive some of that equipment? Just going to move it out? Yeah. That's, I don't know, but I don't think they'll be, you know, I guess they'd have to take a look at it. But I seem to recall that was a road that they used just to help access some other things, and the city back then put chip seal, I think. I'm trying to remember who was Public Works Director at that time. Well, at that time, it was Robert Garza. He was the Public Works Director back at that time, when I came on board, then he moved up. But, so did they have pictures? Send them?
I sent some pictures, Mayor, and a letter. They had, if you can imagine going through their father's decades and decades of paperwork. They actually had the letter and some other other things that we have forwarded on. And so, thank you for listening and taking this, EFO, under consideration. Thank you.
And before I get to EFO, so Councilor Ben Como, interestingly, I found some old information here. In 2016, the city undertook the largest capital improvement project ever, one hundred and forty-eight million. Of that, I counted about thirty million was roads. And at that time, we had all kinds of orange barrels all over the city. I can only imagine what it looked like if we can get a hundred million. So, well, you're going to be the orange barrel lady, and so.
Yes, you know what? I remember the Valley Drive. I don't know if it was Jamie and her team, whoever came up with that messaging around patience for progress was genius, and we need to keep that up.
That was a state project, that one. The Valley Drive one? Yeah, that was state because, but, yeah, I can give you all that info on that. EFO, so now it's the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items, well, several items. Just some upcoming work session items that I want to just make you aware of. You know, we're coming down to the end of the year, and so we're trying to squeeze as much as we can in. We keep saying that the first, we were saying that the first of the year since, since August, and so the first of the year is going to, we're going to really be busy. So, there are a few work session items that have been requested in council that I just want to make you aware that we're planning to bring. One is the census presentation. Amber and Jamie are working together with departments. Departments are coming in with how the census, so not only the census data, but how the census will impact each of the departments. And so, looking forward to that presentation in January. Also, in January, you'll be seeing the bond schedule and meetings and the resolution for the ad hoc committee to be formed, and but that's when things will really start to roll as far as the scheduling and information coming out to the public. It was good to meet our two new councillor-elect. Met them Thursday, and we have a meet, we have a formal meeting scheduled, and onboarding will begin. Jamie is also working with our department heads to have a full-on, full day prepared for them so that they can be introduced to our department heads, and then also tours scheduled for them as well. I know that was a request from our council, and so that will be happening. We're trying to get that in before they're sworn in, the training and everything. So, we're trying to squeeze that in within the next month. In regards to the, the infrastructure bill, we've had our eyes on the, this, the potential money that's going to be coming from the federal government. And so, we've been interviewing a federal lobbyist, potential lobbyist, and we feel like we've identified one that we'd like to bring forward. We feel like we will need a lobbyist to, to help us prioritize, to help us see how we can tap into these monies. And so, but we have identified Larry, myself, and Amy. Been working on it for the last couple of months. Councilor Ben Como, the Squaw Mountain Road name change, I know that was requested last time. Our Community Development Department and planners are on it. They've identified the process, and so they're working on it. They should have something, at least where the process is, something to report back soon. Regarding the Horse and Hound Building, from what I've received, the reports I received, there was some damage, but not total loss. I mean, minimal damage, certainly going to be a cost, but from what I understand, nothing to hold the project up. But I'll get more information and report back as well. Complete Streets Ordinance is almost finalized. Should be finalized by the end of November, but definitely try to make the first meeting in December. The Mobile Crisis Unit that we've been working on, the chief and his team as well, our plan was to take it to the December PR, Health PRC for discussion. So, we've come up with recommendation, recommendation and a plan. So, that should be coming up soon. I believe it's the first week of December is when the Health PRC meeting is. Then some announcements. Visit Las Cruces has given information regarding the Women's Collegiate, so the WAC Conference Volleyball Championship, Women's Volleyball Championship will be held at the Pan Am Center, November 18th through the 20th. Eight collegiate teams and their families, friends will be in town. And just want to add on too, I mean, this, there's so much activity going on with film, with, there's so much energy in the community right now, even with economic development and the hits we've been getting at our industrial park. Really exciting, really, and it's evident in our GRT, and I think it'll continue to be as we, as we see all this energy and this, these events coming. Parks and Rec, there is a, oh, it's already been mentioned, that the team up to clean up. And then, Quality of Life, the Big Read with Joy Harrell, the US Poet Laureate, successfully occurred this past Saturday via Zoom, as well attended, or approximately a hundred twenty-seven attendees. And I believe that's all I have, Mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you, EFO. I believe that's it. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Sorg?
One last question, and I have to ask this because I'm getting bugged pretty bad. Is there any plans to change our UTV ATV use of city streets?
I, I have to follow up, councillor. We are, Seth is looking at it. I just don't have an update on, on when that would be brought forward, but we are, we have looked at it, but I don't know right now. I'll get back to you.
Okay. And but what about our patrols on those streets that they're being used on? There was supposed to be a van that would patrol the use, patrol the streets? Is that, when is that starting?
So, we have, we've identified three different potential vendors for the speed vans. Right now, it's just, just taking it across the finish line and identifying one. But it's with the company, we would be contracting with the company that owns these vans to do that.
Can you give me any kind of time, sooner or later, early as possible, the latest possible time to you that will be in use?
You know, right after this meeting, councillor, I'll follow up with PD and see where the, where we are on that timeline, and I'll get back to you by the end of the day.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You know, I know what I was going to ask. So, regarding, now, Councilor Ben Como, regarding the changing of the Squaw Mountain name, did, isn't that, is that in your district or is that in District Six? So, if I recall, councillor thought us to change the name of a street, I think, did they give you a petition? Did they give you, I think it's usually like seventy-five percent or eighty percent. I can't remember what usually is what, how that worked. So.
Mayor, may I speak to that just because I brought this up? No, I don't think there's been a petition. My point is that it is a terribly awful word, an incredibly disgusting word against indigenous women. I don't think we should have to wait for a petition to, to take initiative and change a name. That is pretty terrible.
Okay, so you want to change it?
The reason I know about this street, Mayor, is because either earlier this year, when we were talking about, when we were having a zoning change at a building that way, and a bunch of folks came and said, please don't open up this road, and remember that? And it wasn't even about that road? And it wasn't even about that road?
Yeah. The, there was a candidate who made some remarks that really weren't true.
Correct. It was based out of misinformation. But because of that, I started, I'm always really curious, and I looked at the map. And when I looked at the map, I found Squaw Mountain Road, and I honestly gasped. I could not believe that this was a road in Las Cruces. And then I was told, well, it's after the mountain, in the Oregon Mountain. However, there is actually efforts by the tribe to change the name of that particular peak as well. So I just, there has been no petition. I don't necessarily think there will be, but I, I think we should take initiative.
Okay, well, I think there's usually a procedure. Yes, Counselor?
Yes, there is a procedure, and my understanding is that the signatures have to come from the people who are making that request, who live in that area. I might be wrong. Our legal department could, you know, edify and lighten all of us. But I agree with, with Counselor Bencomo that irrespective of the usual way of doing it, we should move, we should initiate that as, just as a matter of policy, as a matter of, I mean, it is. And thank you so much, Counselor Bencomo, for bringing that up. I didn't even know it's in my district. So there's probably other streets that have very offensive derogatory terms, words, that have no, have, yeah. So we should probably, I don't know if that's a planning issue. I think it maybe have to be an ordinance. And then the ordinance would have to be retroactive, and then there's, you know, there's, there are legal issues there when, when you want to do something that is, you know, goes back to a pre-existing. So that would be an issue for, for our legal department to look at insofar as moving forward with an ordinance that, that does not allow the use of derogatory racist dehumanizing sexist terms. And I think that we might have a way to do that because, because it is very racist and it is very derogatory. And I think there might be other names throughout the city like that, and with so many developments going on. And so, yeah, probably we have to be an ordinance. And then it would have to be retroactive, and that's, that's a little tough to do, but that would be...
I don't think we can do retroactive ordinances, let legal discuss that. But, okay, I see where you're coming from.
But it could, it could be an ordinance that says that to remove, to think, just in the way that it's worded. But again, it is something for the, I would propose that the legal department look into that, Mr. Peely, that, that legal look into it to see whether it could be, because it is so blatantly offensive, that it's something that would overcome any retroactive application of the law.
Well, Counselor, let me just ask you very candidly here. Are you going to at least contact your constituents that live on that street that this is being discussed? If not, I understand, but someone's going to have to do it, either you or myself. I figure if it's your district, go ahead. If you don't want to do it, then I need to at least let them be aware of this. Because for us to go and circumvent, first off, I understand where you're coming from, and I would be supportive if the residents that live on that street don't want, want to change the name? Okay. And if, because usually it's not 100%. It's usually 70, 80%. But for us just to go ahead and kind of leapfrog over the process, I don't think it sets a very good precedent. And so...
You don't think it sets a good precedent to, to not, to have an ordinance that doesn't allow, that forbids that, those kinds of names?
No, I didn't say that. To bypass the process to change a name, especially if the residents haven't brought it forward to you.
Yeah.
Okay, so getting back to my original question, are you going to go at least contact your constituents?
Ask them to...
Oh, at least let them know that this is being discussed.
Let them know, but is it, so are you then saying, I go and say to these constituents, would you please file a petition with the city to change the name of the street? And then if they say no, go jump in the lake, then do we proceed with an ordinance?
I guess what, if it were me, I'd probably go, let's just say you don't do it, I'll probably go out a few doors, or knock on a few doors, or call a meeting of your District 6 and just say, you know, this is what's being discussed. I want to hear from what you have to say. That's it. If they say, yeah, yeah, we don't like this name either, great, then good, then let's just do what we need to do and get it changed. But if they say absolutely not, I don't want to do that because now I got to go back and change all my legal papers that I have. I got to change all of my stationery that I have. I have all this stuff that I've put all my names on, all these, everything. You know, so let them come forward. I know you all have never been involved in name changes of streets, but when we've done it on the, on the premise of public safety, we still cut a lot. But for someone to, and I understand, believe me, don't get me wrong, I understand where you're coming from. I'm just saying that, you know, this is, there's a process, just like everything else. But if you choose to do it, okay, that's fine. But I think at the very minimum, it's incumbent on us to at least let the residents know that this is being discussed. You know, we can't just take it for granted that they're watching Channel 20, or listening, or watching YouTube, or however that gets, the information gets put out, that people who live on Squaw Mountain Road or are, may have, that, you know, council, certain council members would like to bypass the process that we've had for changing the name of a street and just change it.
Well, I understand your part, the part where you say it's courtesy-driven to contact them. But, but in, but in addition, or irrespective of this particular issue, I think we need to, I guess we need an ordinance to set the planning department correct, or the educate the developers, or the builders, or whoever chooses those horrible names. What do we do now? I mean...
I think that would be fine. That's another issue. That is done through community development. The developer submits it to the city, the city, for the most part, approves it. But if what you're saying, and that probably does make a lot of sense, is to be a little bit more sensitive to some of the wording that they use. But a lot of these, almost all the names of the streets were named by the developers who developed them.
There you have it. Yes, Mr. Peely?
So I don't mean to interrupt you for what you were going to say.
No, this is just, you know, Larry, like I said, Larry and his team have been working on it. So apparently, there is an option that can be initiated by city administration. That's a part of the process. You know, normally, a petition, petition does, as you mentioned, Mayor, require 75% approval. But as it states, this is from Mr. Nichols, the other, it's a city administrative action that is, the CDD, CDD Director determined that an existing street name change would benefit the city from a public safety aspect. The existing name may not represent a public safety concern, however, Councilor Bencomo described it as being derogatory. This is, this is from Larry. So we can, within that definition, having derogatory with problematic roots could be, that's something they're looking at, and we can have legal weigh-in on that as well. But with the petition, though, even if we went that option, we can initiate it and take it to the residents to, as we explained, the derogatory nature of it, have that as well, can cover both sides. But like I said, I think our community development department is aware of the process, and the goal is to try and get this changed. That's what they're, and to find and fit within the process to do it. So we're, we're not proposing that we circumvent any process. We feel like we can get this done within the process that's outlined, even if we need to go initiate it, but, but even have the, you know, put it forward to the residents for that petition.
Thanks, EFO. Circling back to what I just mentioned, I just think, so is this something you would want to do, to at least go to that particular street and knock on some doors and just tell them this is what's being discussed? Yes or no?
Yes, absolutely. So long as I have a bodyguard.
I think...
And I'm serious about that.
No, I think it's probably not a bad idea.
I'm serious about that.
With someone, so...
Thank you.
Counselor Sor, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say, I was deeply involved in name changes of streets here when Hacienda Acres was in my district, and it is very difficult. However, I think this is a little different situation. I totally agree with Counselor Bencomo. I think we need to get the name changed as quickly as possible.
And just to kind of, on what you just said, Counselor, of course, I was, were you been, I've been there too. So it was when it was, believe it or not, there were the names on the Hacienda Acres mirrored the same names that are in the, that other subdivision that's also in District 5, named after the planets, Mars, Venus, Pluto. They were the same over there.
Yeah, there was duplicate names.
Yeah, and that was why they did it in name of public safety, because you send out our emergency personnel, and they don't know which, which one. I mean, is it, and then, and to a certain degree, there's a Road Runner Lane and there's a Road Runner Parkway. So, but fortunately, we haven't had that same, because there's not that many people who live on Road Runner Lane, or doesn't have the same congestion. So I'm just telling you that I think at the very least, that a government needs to be, you know, I understand where we're coming from, but has, needs that, to at least let their constituency know, because ultimately, we answer to the public, and we need to at least let them know this is what's being discussed, one way or the other, whether you are for it or against it, or remain neutral. They need to, they need to be aware of it, and then they can, they can come here and voice their concerns. And let them, let council explain to them why the name, they feel needs to be changed. That's, that's all I'm trying to get.
I don't disagree with that, Mr. Mayor, but I do believe that government has a duty to not perpetuate these stereotypes. I mean, imagine, just imagine if there was, well, forget it, I mean, you can use your imagination. There's a lot of words that were used, you can see old movies that used words that today would be reprehensible. So in today's, today's environment, in today's, there's no excuse for the government to allow those names. Thank you.
Mayor, if I'm, oh, sorry.
Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do have Merriam-Webster's dictionary pulled up as well at the moment, and it does give the definition of squaw. Number one definition, it has offensive for an Indigenous woman of North America. Item number two, dated, disparaging, and offensive woman or wife. All definitions do point towards it being under the derogatory terminology that we do have in our language.
Thank you for that, Counselor Beta Stuvi. And again, I'm not disputing it. I'm just saying that I think at the very minimum, the residents need to be aware of that this is being discussed. Because I have yet to receive any email. I don't know if you have. Actually, I thought maybe it was brought, I thought, you know, regardless, just, that's all I'm trying to get, is they need to at least be aware of it. Because I don't want them to, you know, they read in the newspaper and say, oh, well, your name changed, your, your street name just got changed, you know? Just, I just think it's just, it's good government to let, at least let them know. Yes, Counselor Bencomo?
Yes, perhaps CD can begin also sending letters out to constituents on that road that this is potentially going to happen. I think, I also find it incredibly problematic that I, I am going to go out on a limb here and say that this street is probably made up of mostly non-Indigenous people that might not find that word directly offensive, and so might say, no, it's not worth it. But I, so I find, you know, I find that very problematic.
Oh, I hear you. I hear you. And I agree that it would be beneficial for the name to be changed, but I'm just circling back to people who live on that street, they should at least be aware of this is being discussed. That's all. Let them be able to share with them their concerns. If they don't come with the city council, if, after we tell them, and they just don't do anything about it, okay, well, that's another story. Okay, were you going to say something else?
Just, just one more thing. Larry has sent me the whole process and how this works. I appreciate him getting on it. What he's working on right now is, he did mention that, you know, as a part of the process, a replacement name, even if we're going to go to the residents, coming with the replacement name would be something he suggested. And so he's had, he's contacted somebody with the historical preservation to at least propose some, some potential names, even as we go out, it might be helpful for us to, when we do knock on doors, to, to share some of the potential name change.
Okay, no, I, I think that's good, but, okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for the conversation. Anything else?
No, thank you, Mayor.
My Team Up to Clean Up event, Saturday, 7:00 to noon, District 1. I didn't think the PIO, I don't think the press release was clear, but Apalaka Park? Meet at Apalaka Park? Was it clear, Jamie? No, I think she's saying no, but I didn't see a...
I'm sorry, I did get this from Parks and Rec. I thought we mentioned it earlier, so I kind of skipped past it. But it is, it's from 7:00 AM to noon. Two roll-off containers will be available during the event hours at Apalaka Park and behind Landoa Vaca Sita Cafe.
So we can meet at Apalaka Park? So I'm going to send a flash, newsflash, to my district, and so it'll be, please come out, Apalaka Park. Because, you know, my district is beautiful and historic, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you. I was trying to lighten the, feels a little, feels a little, okay. Take a deep breath, everybody. All right, we're going to make this happen. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so I'll need a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Flotis, second by Mayor Potem Ganda, that we adjourn. Christine?
This is on the motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting. Counselor Beta Stuvi?
Yes.
Counselor Vasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Bencomo?
Yes.
Counselor Sor? Counselor, Counselor Flotis?
Yes.
Counselor Ganda?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. It's 4:02 PM. We are adjourned. Counselor Sor, you have a piece of steel in that mask?